Is mickey on?
Everyone's on.
Okay.
I'm right here, buddy.
It must be six o'clock then. Exactly. I would like to call to order the Malibu City Council regular meeting of March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city dot org forward slash virtual meeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. Those who wish to speak during the meeting should follow the instructions at malibu city dot org forward slash virtual meeting. Please make sure you visit malibu city dot org forward slash virtual meeting early to sign up and speak and download the Zoom application. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Fair, here. Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Councilmember Yurin?
Here.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Here.
Mayor Crisanti?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Do we have any public speakers on the closed session items?
I am checking that right now. And no, you don't have any public speakers for your closed session item, and I don't see any raised hands from the public in Zoom.
Great. We will now recess to the closed session to discuss the item listed on the closed session agenda. We will reconvene at six thirty PM to begin the regular session and hear the closed session report. So now we depart this and go back into the other one.
It's now six thirty, I'd like to call to order the Malibu City Council Regular Meeting of March fourteenth, twenty twenty two. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and we appreciate everyone's patience. As we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Council members and city staff are participating for remote from remote locations and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting. Or watch it by going to MalibuCity.org/virtualmeeting. At this screen you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items. Those who wish to speak during the meeting should follow the instructions at MalibuCity.org/virtualmeeting. Please make sure you visit MalibuCity.org/virtualmeeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called. So you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have comments to make during this meeting, please raise your hand and I will call on you in turn. So we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Fair?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Councilmember Euring?
Here.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Here.
Mayor Grisanti?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, may I have a closed session report?
Mayor Grisanti, members of the council, good afternoon. The council did convene a closed session tonight at six PM pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D. To discuss the case entitled Manny MBI versus the City of Malibu. The council recessed at six twenty and took no reportable actions other than actually getting an update on the case. That concludes my report.
Okay. I'm gonna ask for an approval of the agenda, but I'd like to make a motion to begin with to move two A to the end of the agenda. I'm, I'm believe that item seven C will get quite a lot of discussion and I hate. We got criticized after the last meeting. For two A taking too long and the people who were the, um. Wanted to get the report on the water treatment plant having to wait, so that's what I'd like to propose. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Bruce, I see your hand.
Yeah, could, could we ask Kelsey to tell us how many speakers have registered for two A and how many have registered for seven B?
Seven C.
B. I asked about B.
Okay.
You have nine speaker signups for item two A and you have seven speaker signups for item seven B.
And what, what about seven C while we're at it since Paul asked about that?
You have one speaker sign up for that item.
That's what I figured. You know. I don't see a major reason why we would need to move up, move back the public, general public comment. It's, it's, this is a very, this is a pretty, I wanna, night when we've got serious, um, multiple heavy things to do, heavy lifting, I would think it makes, might make sense, but. This is a pretty light agenda and I suspect we're going to get to the item seven matters within an hour and a half at the most.
From your lips to God's ears. Okay. Steve, I see your hand raised.
Uh, yes, I don't think night speakers is a reason to move it to the end of the agenda. It's not gonna take that long, so I would recommend we leave it right where it is.
Karen, do you have some thoughts on it as well?
Uh, I will just note for the record, um, in my discussions with other council members from other cities, many cities take. Public comments on, on items not on the agenda at the end, not at the beginning of the meeting.
Paul, can I quick words?
Do, please do.
I, I think there's an issue we've kind of talked about a bit and we should probably agendize this issue. Um, to have a talk about how we might update this and upgrade it. I, um, I, I get the point, but I, I, I think maybe we should have a community discussion on change, change is hard. And, uh, I think it might be needed, but it might be the better way to go. In my opinion.
All right. Well, I don't need to call a vote on that, so let's, uh, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Uh, we have to, uh, sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, um. Have to, did you remove item seven A?
I did not.
Get the vote on that.
I'll make a motion to remove item seven A is that, well, it has to be removed.
They're moving, we're gonna move to the twenty eight.
Guess I, I, it's actually. It has to be removed because it was written wrong, so it has to be completely redone.
Okay. So it has to be removed and re-noticed, so we have a motion, we need a motion to remove item seven A?
I made, I made a motion, just needs a second to.
I'll second, I don't, I don't know if we need that, but I'll second.
Kelsey, would you like to take the role?
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion.
And Paul, Paul, I would like to adjourn the meeting tonight and, uh, in memory of Johnny Fane. Uh, who was a surfer who, I, I met him a couple times, uh, but I was not around when he was in his heyday. Uh, tearing up the, the waves over in, in, in the ocean there, or in the, he was in the Gidget movies, so I guess he had quite a. Uh, a time here and a lot of the surfers that I've spoken to over the last week just be very highlight of him, so. Uh, like I said, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in his honor this evening.
I had the privilege of doing some deals with him over the years and I'm glad to adjourn the meeting in his memory. I don't know if we need to make a motion, but I'll just write it down that I'm gonna do it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion to remove to adj, to, uh. To approve the agenda with the exception of item seven A.
We already have the motion in the second.
Yeah, okay. But did we? So is that what we voted on, Kelsey? Okay, good.
Approve the agenda of removing that item, yes, thank you.
Great. Now, may I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on March fourth, twenty twenty two, with the amended agenda posted on March tenth, twenty twenty two.
Great. Okay, our first item today is a ceremonial presentation, a proclamation declaring March twenty twenty two as Red Cross month. And I believe that Neil Goldberg will be, is online to accept this. Where, and the proclamation which I have right here. Says, whereas for more than a century, the Malibu be. So much for backgrounds. For more than a century, the American Red Cross has been at the forefront of helping Americans prevent, prepare for and respond to large and small disasters. And whereas the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours. Whether it's providing emergency shelter, food and comfort for families devastated by local disasters like the Woolsey Fire. Donating essential blood, supporting service members and veterans, helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR and other skills. Or delivering international humanitarian aid and. Whereas their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to the strengthening of our community's resilience. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Malibu declares March twenty twenty two as Red Cross Month. And encourages all citizens of Malibu to reach out and support its humanitarian mission.
We do have Neil Goldberg unmuted here, if you'd like to say a few words.
Uh, sure, I'd be happy to, I'm, uh, not on video, but that's totally fine. Uh, thank you, first of all, for the proclamation. Um, I am a board member for the American Red Cross, the LA Division, which serves Malibu. I'm also have, was a longtime resident of Malibu and Shark supporter, so. My kids went through the school system there and I thank everybody, my, uh, Malibu is definitely a home for our family. Uh, and thank you to the city for the partnership, as you just said, we've, uh. We've been working with the city, had incredible support when setting up the shelter at Malibu High School during the flooding, flooding at Leo Carrillo. The fires, uh, the city's EMO was able to transport everyone there quickly and seamlessly during the floods to the Malibu school, so. Uh, you know, we really just appreciate, um, everything, the, the, the partnership, right? And obviously this comes at a unique moment, so a special thanks to everybody on the Zoom call as well who supports the Red Cross in any way. Um, just creating awareness about what we do, donating blood, whatever it is, it's, uh. This is a strange time for everybody, right? We don't know where the world goes from here. And, uh, the Red Cross is over there internationally, I'm actually thinking about going over to Poland myself. Um, you know, there's something about, uh, humanity and compassion, when you start to get the bug to donate your time. Strange things happen inside and you start to see that we are actually all connected and, uh. It's a pretty beautiful thing and it does, uh, at the same time, while there's so much human suffering, uh, it makes you want to do something. So for anybody that's on the call listening that does want to do something, I would certainly say. Feel free to reach out to myself directly, NeilGoldberg@yahoo.com, it's N E I L. And, uh, or just call the Red Cross or go to redcross.org/LA. And, uh, certainly they need blood right now. And as you've already indicated, there's a lot of great programs that are free to anybody, water safety, lifesaving things, so. Um, thank you so much and, uh, just wish everybody, uh, good health, safety and peace.
Thank you, Neil. We appreciate your, your devotion to this organization. Uh, that takes us to item two A, communications from the public concerning matters which are not on the agenda, but for which the City Council has subject matter jurisdiction. City Council may not act on these matters except to the refer the matters to staff or to schedule the meetings. The matters for a future agenda, do we have any public speakers?
Yes, you do, and I'm sorry, I misspoke earlier, we have eight speakers, we had a duplicate sign up, but our first two speakers are Bill Stampsen, Joe Drummond, Rosemary Ide and Brian Wellington. We'll hear from Bill Stampsen first.
Hello, Bill, are you available?
I am here, thank you. I guess, uh, well, since seven A is not there, I've heard from more than a few people who suggested the proposed firing of Dr. Goldfarb is in fact due to misogynist, um. Behavior. Uh, it has also been suggested, I don't know if I can prove that or not, uh, more than a few people. Believe that that coupled with the attacks on Mr. Silverstein are anti-Semitic, I don't know. Uh, but you ought to think about it. Uh, now moving along. I have asked before, that's something that I would think is pretty simple, you just read a proclamation. You can have something honoring Walton Lucille Keller. If, I haven't seen it on an agenda yet, I don't know why. Uh, they are the mother and father of our community and you, some of you were here then. Um, I think. I believe Mrs. Farah was here, I think Steve was here. Mr. Grisanti was here, I was here. Um, and I don't know if Mikey was or not. Uh, but do something for him, time's a wasting, I got friends dropping like flies and a lot of people my age do now. Um, I, they're more than one side field on the precipice, let's do something for these people, it's nice and. Uh, you know, we have a city because they stood up for all of us. But I haven't seen it on the agenda. You know, we managed to get some kind of faith healing on the agenda tonight, but we can't get Walton Lucille on, something gets serious. Um, anyway, next. Picasso, a year ago. Mr. Silverstein said, hey, let's do something about this Picasso before it gets bigger. You know, we used, I used to talk to the old council before Airbnb had any. Prospect of big dogs funding it. Then the big dogs got in, the big hedge funds got in, Picasso's probably already there, but you're sitting around watching them. They're turning communities into time shares, maybe you like that. At least two of you voted for the motels that are cancer in our city. You got some time possibly to deal with Picasso, but I don't see it on the agenda, what are you guys doing? Maybe you hate Bruce, but he happens to be right. You know, set aside your hatred for him. I won't agree with the people I've heard about the reasons for that hatred, because I, I can't prove it and it's a charge that I prefer not to make unless I can prove it. But the hatred is obvious and you need to stop it. And get Picasso out of here. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joe Drummond.
Hi, Joe, are you available?
Hi, yes. So after hearing about your, you Paul's comments at the end of the meeting on February fourteenth and recently discovering that. You have no female appointees to any commissions, I'd like to ask the city manager, the city attorney and the two sitting city council members, Karen and Mikey, who voted for. Paul as mayor over the one who had the most votes of residents to respond to the following misogynist actions he has taken. One, he is currently attempting to make deals with Qatar even while knowing it is wrong as per his emails to the city manager regarding this. A country that historically restricts and marginalizes women's human rights and keeping these dealings confidential violating a public records request. Two, he has not appointed one woman to his five official commissions. Three, he voted out female senior SMMC advisory committee representative Pat Healy along with Mikey and Karen following his lead for a male Lloyd Ahorn. Four, his first real estate transaction involved taking advantage of an elderly woman from her rightful profits on her Malibu condominium. And reaping the profits for himself by selling it for thirty percent more plus a commission for himself a few days later. I've recently resent, been sent this evidence which I have forwarded to the city manager and city attorney. Five, voting for himself over the rightful mayor who received the most votes of both female and male residents in Malibu who supports women and senior streets. In Malibu and will soon be the only council member with a majority of women seated on his commissions. Six, not one woman spoke in favor for Paul Grisanti to be elected as mayor during public comment when at least half of the supporters for Bruce were female. Does the majority city council only listen to the minority of men? It seems that Mikey Pearson is also following suit by his attempting to appoint a younger male over his only female commission appointee, Dr. George Goldberg. Do Mikey U support the influx of Qatari cashes Malibu in Malibu Recreation as caught at the cost of supporting these prejudiced values? This is my official complaint, having a mayor come from a place of hateful leadership like this is terrible for Malibu and Paul needs to be removed. Or stepped down from his honorary, honorary mayoral position now that his agenda is clear. As City Council Policy Number Thirty Three states, seniority shall be determined by the number of votes received at the election, the highest vote getter shall be considered most senior and so on. Why wasn't this enforced on February fourteenth during the mayoral election? Why are the voters and majority women's wishes being ignored? Why are the voters and majority women's wishes being ignored? Women hold more than half of the population of Malibu and represent family and environmental values. Action speaks louder than words and no words can explain these hateful actions. If he's hoping for a real estate deal from these Qataris to sell out Malibu, then that's what really needs to be investigated. I hope you Karen as the only woman on council can support the women here and the men who support them. I'm surprised that you only have two out of five women on your commissions. As a nine-year resident of Malibu and a woman of color whose people have been tortured and taken advantage of the country Qatar, I am extremely horrified by Paul Grisanti's actions with his deals with Qatar. And I hope these dealings will be made public and openly criticized by the sitting council members in both city manager and city attorney. This would be dangerous for Malibu and continuing to instill the nature of misogyny and equality in the city. I also question if the three council majority are anti-Semitic and covering up the results of the investigation of Bruce Silverstein and twice preventing a first-time Jewish mayor also supporting an Arab nation who obviously are against the Jewish culture speaks volumes. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rosemary Eyed, followed by Brian Wellington, Scott Good and Suzanne Gildman.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening, Rosemary. How are you?
I'm fine. Thank you. I'm asking you to, I'm a little shocked that you, we didn't vote you in as an ambassador, you know, but having dealings with foreign countries, I don't think it's a very healthy issue for city council members. Especially because when when they want to give something to the city, they're asking for something much bigger. And and that worries me. And that's just the way humanity is, especially on cities or any business company. So that's all I wanted to say. I think city council, you should make sure we get our permits signed and returned. And also a neighbor of mine, he can't get a permit for some just minor alteration on on his newly bought house. This should be your primary concern that the city runs very smoothly. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Our next speaker would be Brian Wellington, but I don't see him in the meeting. So we'll try to circle back and we'll hear from Scott Good, followed by Suzanne Goldman, Georgia Goldfarb and John Maza.
Mr. Good, are you available?
Scott, you should see a pop-up asking you to unmute.
Hey, can you guys see me?
No. But we can hear you.
Can you guys see me now?
We can hear you, Scott. Do you wish to address us?
Uh, yeah, basically, yeah. So I'm here in Maine. You guys are in Hawaii, right?
We're in Malibu.
Yeah, Malibu, right? Yeah. So we got a fuck a fuck ton of lobsters up here and we're trying to like ship them down to uh, Malibu.
Scott, you're you should please watch your language. This is being transmitted over the public airwaves.
Okay.
If that's the end of Scott's comment, we'll hear from Suzanne Gildman next, followed by Georgia Goldfarb, John Maza and Ryan.
Hi Suzanne, are you available?
I'm here. That's a tough act to follow, but I'll do my best. I would like to take this opportunity to remind everyone that yes, commissioners serve at the council's pleasure and can be dismissed at will, but the discrimination based on sex and age is morally and ethically wrong. And under California's Fair Employment and Housing Act, it's also illegal. Volunteers as well as employees are protected from discrimination. You cannot legally dismiss someone for being female, for being a senior or for having or not having children. Parks and Recreation Commissioner Dr. Georgia Goldfarb was told that she was being replaced by a man who is younger than she is and that this decision was being made specifically because her replacement has young children. While she is older and a grandparent, that's a textbook example of unlawful termination and the kind of sexism and ageism that is unfortunately endemic in California, even in California, in government and society. This is a city that already has a problem with representation. Men have always greatly outnumbered women on the council and commissions. We currently have two city commissions with no women on them at all and one with just one. Once Dr. Goldfarb is removed, there will be two of you up there with not one single female commissioner between you. Georgia attended every meeting of her commission for nearly four years. She's done extensive research, putting countless hours into city projects and ably chaired the commission through the challenges of Zoom and the pandemic. And she's being abruptly dismissed just months before the end of her four-year term because of her age and gender. Age, gender and fertility should never be part of this or any other qualification for any volunteer position. This is the twenty-first century, not the Handmaid's Tale. March is Women's History Month, a good time to reflect on the role of women in society, a role that is still all too often eclipsed and undervalued. Men make the vast majority of the decisions that affect all of us in Malibu. It is important that those decisions are not rooted in systemic misogyny and ageism. This is not one of the city's better moments, but I hope it's one that can lead to positive change. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Our next speaker, we have Georgia Goldfarb, followed by John Maza, Ryan and Alex Stein.
Hi, Dr. Goldfarb, are you available?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Right. Good evening, council members and mayor. I would like to state that I have not resigned as a park and rec commissioner and I wish to continue to serve. I would also like to state that during my tenure, Councilmember Pearson has not expressed dissatisfaction with my service until I supported the traditional succession of the person with the highest votes received in the recent election becoming mayor. In this case, it happened to be Councilmember Silverstein. It is my understanding of common cause principles, the precedent or tradition should not be changed because of personal disagreement or dislike. To me, to do so would undermine the principles of fairness and common agreement. Areas of agreement reflecting on Councilmember Pearson and my discussions, both in terms of park and rec goals and accomplishment, to my knowledge, include the following. First, parks, populating our parks with native plants, increasing native pollinator plants, removal of invasive plants, eliminating pesticides from city properties in Malibu, pursuit of grants to aid the city in these activities, restoration of our parks after the Woolsey Fire, installation of a skate park, supportive trails for tranquil fields and responding to residents' wishes for a dog park in Los Flores. We also have other areas of agreement related to microgrids, the need for undergrounding wires, house hardening and fire prevention, the importance of disaster prevention preparation and fire brigades, the need to act to help the homeless and the release of records of the recent investigation of charges made by Reba Southman. Thank you for your time, Georgia Goldfarb.
Thank you, Georgia.
Our next speaker is John Maza, followed by Ryan and Alex Stein.
Hi, John. Are you available?
I am available and Steve Earring kind of took away my thunder, but on behalf of the Serving Heritage Cultural Foundation, myself and a lot of graying surfers, I thank you for honoring Johnny Fane with this meeting recognition. He was one of the what was called the Four Aces of Malibu in the golden era of surfing. They included Mickey Dora, Johnny Fane, Dewey Weber and Lance Carson. Lance is the only one left. That era actually made the name Malibu recognizable around the country even before the car came out. So a lot of people still remember that. Johnny was in ten movies. He was truly the face of that era in Malibu. He, they included Big Wednesday and Beach Bank of Bingo and all of those movies. In general, he was really a good guy. So in remembering and we're remembering a part of Malibu's history which is fading away. That's why the Serving Heritage Cultural Foundation was founded is to keep this up. And so I hope next time you're all in dukes, you say hi to Gidget. And thank you again for honoring Johnny. That's it.
Thank you, John.
Our next speaker is Ryan, followed by Alex Stein.
Hey, Ryan. Are you available?
Yes, thank you. I I wanted to call your attention to the agenda item removed. Because I think I heard that the item would return. But I think that would be a very bad. You know, Mikey, I'm just going to say under public comment, I I think you ought to reconsider and shelf your option to try and remove someone in the last few months of your term. I don't know if if this is a political mistake you want to make. But there really isn't a problem with the service and the issue would never have come up if you hadn't voted for the wrong person as mayor and follow, you know, policy thirty-three of the city in the mayor rotation in the first place. So it looks like spite. And there's the other item on the agenda coming up that is y'all just are trying to get along. It looks like you're going for broke here and trying to to accomplish something. We don't know what the other shooter drop would be, but we can only guess. And I think you ought to just withdraw it and and let things be. And it's this type of turmoil that is being mischaracterized as gee, some of the council members can't get along. Well, maybe if we stop the shenanigans and the the quickies and the little tricks here and voting to go against the the city's codes and protocols, maybe the the transparency that's needed and and stopping all the manipulation or the lies, that's what really needs to happen. And there needs to be some reform within the staff and city managers on top of that. That brings me to the second item. The issue that was removed. Neither, there are multiple departments involved with that proposed action. It did not qualify. In fact, it violated the city's own code and probably government code of California. There was no vacancy. There can be no appointment. The the statement that it's okay to appoint someone has written in the report was false. And there was no vacancy according to the municipal code of of Malibu. So let's let's do a little investigation of how this thing grew legs. There's got to have been an email or a directive. How was it that was the city clerk bullied into this? Because it looks fairly clear on its face, it shouldn't have happened. And you know, there's other department heads involved. I'd like to know if, you know, from John Cotty, I'd like one of you to ask him, how did this happen? Because this is so wrong as a matter of policy and procedure at the staff level of the city. I'm concerned that the staff is still politicized this long after Reeve has been gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Our next speaker is Alex Stein.
Hi, Alex. Are you available?
Yes, I am. Okay. Guys, thank you so much for having me, Paul. But listen, you know, you're the fake mayor. You know, you voted for yourself. You know, you don't deserve that position. And then doing a little bit of a forensic audit of your background, we see some of your real estate holdings would make Donald Trump jealous. I mean, the way you have scammed some of these elderly women out of money, Paul, you should be ashamed of yourself. But you're not because you're the same person that would vote for yourself in an election. So that shows what kind of moral character you have. You have very low moral character. And sadly, you weren't even elected for the position that you're holding. You didn't get enough votes from the city, yet you elected yourself that position. And rightfully, we know it's Bruce's and we know there's only one really truly honorable person here and that's Steve. But we don't need to get into that. We're going to get into the sexism later in in this council. But forget about that, guys. You forget about what you guys firing all the women. Let's think about the trans rights. Let's think about one of the most famous people in your community. Caitlyn Jenner is a transgendered advocate. I see no trans people. I see no trans representation whatsoever. So we're going to get into all the sexism. But you guys, this is twenty twenty-two. You're in Malibu, California, one of the most progressive places in the entire world. You guys should be ashamed of yourself for running a council like this. That's all men, especially all white men. I don't see one person of color on this council. And then I see Paul Croissante. I see a guy that shouldn't be there. It actually kind of makes me sick to look at him to see that people can fail upwards in life. And then we like we go back to the real estate dealings. That paints a picture of his character. So when I want to harp on tonight, when we get into those agenda items, because during the non-agenda portion, we can't speak about that. But we're going to expose things and we're going to do a forensic background check on everybody, on Karen, on Paul, on Mickey. And we're going to expose the people for their fraudulent dealings. And obviously we could bring this stuff up sooner, but that wouldn't affect November as well. If we did it, we have to do it sooner, closer to the election to make sure that you guys lose. Because I'm telling you, with every ounce of my will, I will not stop and I will not stop fighting until Paul is gone, until Karen is gone, until Mickey is gone. If I have to personally spend all the money I got in my bank account to make that happen, I will. And trust me, I have a bigger social media following, I have a bigger internet following than all of you guys combined. And what we're going to do is we're going to have a campaign similar to what the Scientology department does, all within the law, but all very, very, very embarrassing. So I would just hope that if there are any skeletons whatsoever in your closet, you guys need to clean that up because we're going to find those closets. Well, I'm in the bail bond business. Let me tell you something. I can find what happened, what your mom did, what your aunt did, what your sister did, Paul. And what we're going to do is we're going to get the little old ladies that you scammed out of their apartments. We're going to get all the people in your real estate dealings that made Donald Trump look like a hero. I mean, literally, when I think of a a real estate guy i- in the political business, all I do is think of a guy as crooked as Donald Trump. The only difference is Donald Trump has a nice head of hair on his head, but that's not here. We're not here to talk about Donald Trump's good looks. What we are here to talk about is the injustice that's happening in Malibu, California, that we are going to fix. Primetime ninety-nine Alex Stein is going to fix it himself. Just watch and learn, fellas and ladies. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. That was quite inspiring. Do we have anybody else?
I still don't see Brian Wellington in the meeting, but we do have a raised hand from Braxton Foley, so we'll hear from him next.
Mr. Foley, are you available?
Yeah, so I know there's a whole bunch of misogyny, but the real misogyny is against the lizards. There are thousands of lizards in Malibu County that are not holding office in the political spectrum and it's not okay. We voted more lizards as Daddy Alex Stein says, so that we could bring justice to Malibu. I close my case.
Thank you so much for your input.
And I don't see any other raised hands in Zoom or have any more speaker signups, so that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Do we have any commission or committee updates?
Yes, we have Lance Simmons here to give an update.
Hi Lance, are you available?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. As Chair of the Public Works Commission, I just want to let the council know that on February twenty-third, we had a joint meeting of the Public Works Commission and the Public Safety Commission to discuss the Westward Beach Improvement Project. And over the course of four-plus hours, we reached near unanimous conclusion on all aspects of the project, taking into consideration all the environmental concerns that residents had expressed as well as the public safety concerns. And there was one outstanding issue that was not resolved. And that was the boardwalk on the beachside. So that's something which the council is going to have to take up in the near future. And the vote on that, by the way, was the five members of the Public Works Commission voted in favor. But the the members of the Public Safety Commission, four voted against and one voted in favor. So so there was, we could not reach agreement on that particular aspect of the project. But you'll be dealing with this soon enough, I understand, on the twenty-eighth. It's going to be before council. And I just wanted to say that the the cooperation between the two commissions, Public Works and the Public Safety Commission, this is the second meeting in a row that we had done a joint meeting. We accomplished a lot. And there was very good rapport between the two commissions. And it's something I think we want to continue to move. And it's something I think we want to continue to move forward on as we deal with issues which involve maybe, you know, multiple commissions. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that to you to y'all's attention and wish you a good evening.
Thank you, Lance. Do we have any other commissioners or committees to report?
No, that was your only commissioner update.
Is Mr. McClary available?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'd like to share that as of today, masks are no longer required at City Hall, but are now strongly recommended. That again, that change took place today. As you know, throughout the pandemic, the city has generally followed the recommendations of the L.A. County Department of Public Health. And we are following suit, obviously, with their change in recommendations for indoor masking. We are continuing to follow many, if not all, of the county's guidelines and recommendations regarding social distancing and other measures. So essentially, we are working with the same protocols and safeguards that we had in place when the city hall reopened in February, with the exception of the masks, which are no longer required, but are now strongly recommended. Also wanted to report that I participated this Saturday along with our school separation team in the first of two scheduled mediation sessions with the between the city and the Santa Monica, Malibu Unified School District regarding school separation. There is a follow-up scheduled meeting for that, which will be occurring in a few weeks. Also wanted to report that I attended the monthly business roundtable, which was held last Friday. There will be a special city council meeting scheduled for Thursday, March twenty-fourth at six P.M. This will be to hear the recommendations from the Homeless Task Force that they have provided to city council regarding alternative, alternative sleeping location. Also wanted to thank Chair Simmons and also confirm that we do have scheduled for the March twenty-eighth city council meeting, the item regarding the Westward Beach Improvement Project. Also wanted to report that at the end of this month, March thirtieth at two P.M., we have scheduled a Zeracis meeting. This will be to discuss amendments to the city's temporary use permit ordinance. And another matter that I know council and the public in the community is eager to see move forward. Also at that meeting, we will be discussing how to implement the city's recently adopted policy regarding the regulation and control of the use of pesticides in the city. Also wanted to note some good news regarding solar permitting. The planning department is processing roof-mounted solar permits as over-the-counter approvals with a generally with a same-day turnaround. We are encouraging applicants to visit our public counter. However, we are accepting applications virtually. Ground-mounted solar panels are often the same-day approvals. However, some approvals do take longer due to ESHA slopes, drainage, geology, and other factors. In some cases, applications are routed to various city reviewers for comments on site-specific conditions prior to approval. But again, for some of those roof-mounted solar panels, we are able to turn those around in one day. Happy to answer any questions, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Steve. Would you like to report on the on the accident this morning? Do we have somebody from the sheriff's department who can talk?
We do. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we do have somebody here from the sheriff's department. They will be giving you a report on that accident. They they can, as well as on some other enforcement activities that occurred over the weekend. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. Kelsey, who who do we have available from the sheriff's department?
We do have Joseph Fender. He's unmuted and on camera.
Captain Fender, are you available?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
And members of the city council, thank you for having me here tonight, the city council meeting. Yes, I wanted to give you a quick update on that DUI crash we had early this morning around midnight. So a another resident driving under the influence of alcohol crashed into a power pole there at PCH in Rambla Vista. Knocking out the power pole and then you're rendering Big Rock and some of the neighboring communities without power for some time. So, you know, unfortunately, another driving under the influence of alcohol crash in Malibu. But the good news is that will take me into my statistics. If you remember or not, early last week, I made a vow, not only to the cog, but to the Public Safety Commission there in Malibu, that we were going to make an impact on the speeding and racing and DUI activities there in Malibu. And in this last weekend alone, I'm happy to report, my traffic deputies made an impact. They made a significant impact in Malibu. They wrote eighty-seven citations in one weekend. Eighty, I'm gonna repeat that, eighty-seven citations in one weekend for egregious violations, egregious speeding. So not what we would normally think is tiki-tack or, you know, really trivial violations. These were egregious speeding violations up and down PCH as well as in the canyons. I made a vow, like I said, not only to the city of Malibu, but to the city of Calabasas, because they both kind of, they sit on either sides of the mountain there. I could report to you that forty-one of those citations were issued for canyon speeders of the supercars in the canyons, forty-one citations in one weekend. That's that's incredible. And to follow that up with forty-six additional citations just in the city of Malibu. And those citations range from, I can do the breakdown, thirty-two for speed alone. So thirty-two of those forty-six were for speed alone, with the most egregious being thirty miles over the posted speed limit. Thirty miles over. Fiber for cell phones, fiber for modified exhaust and forward for tinted windows or other equipment violations found on the vehicles. But the majority of the bulk, as you can see, thirty-two out of the forty-six, just in Malibu, were speeding alone. So that we've taken a zero tolerance posture in Malibu and some of the other cities of the cog and in the canyons. We're going to be addressing the speeding and the racing as well as the pedestrian bicycle safety that affects PCH and those neighboring communities off of PCH.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I see Bruce's hand is raised. Do you have a question, Bruce?
Are we muted? You're muted, Bruce.
That was the city muted me. Okay, I'm unmuted. Thank you for your service. We appreciate your coming in here and jumping into it. And I wish you success with the permanent appointment when that comes to be made. And of course, it's great to hear so many citations have been issued. You're taking this so seriously. Obviously, the goal is to have no citations issued because people are actually following the law. So thanks, thanks for your help.
I couldn't agree with you more, sir. I think we got a little bit of feedback. I think there was a little frustration from from maybe some of the people that were stopped and detained for for what they would believe to be trivial. But, you know, at this point, it's again, it's a zero tolerance. We have to get that message out, keep those city streets safe. PCH has to be safe. Especially during those evening hours between eight o'clock and six o'clock at night, those seem to be our most dangerous, as I talked to Mr. McClary about. So we have some, we have some specialized enforcement coming up. I I don't have any problem with letting the citizens of Malibu know that ahead of time, because I'd rather have them know and not being out there committing traffic violations or driving under the influence. So it's not, it's not a trick. There's nothing up our sleeves, no pun intended. But, you know, we gotta keep those communities safe. And with a little bit of zero tolerance, hopefully, we can get some compliance from the citizens and they'll realize that it's a more safe community.
Thank you so much. That is well within what we hope for. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, do we have any city councils? Now, Bruce, did you want to say something else?
I was raising my hand for the next section.
Okay. Please, Bruce, go ahead.
Yeah, I thought I thought it would be good to go first tonight, that way, when I have, if I have some things to say, which I do, about some other members of councils' actions, they'll have an opportunity to respond rather than have to wait two weeks or not at all. So I want to thank the speakers. And I want to start off by saying, when I asked the question of how many speakers there were and and said I didn't think we should vary, I really didn't know who was going to speak tonight. I didn't know that what the content of those were going to be. As people watching these meetings know, I am as often as not the subject of derision of a number of speakers. So I always come into this meeting, I do some meditation before it starts, I do some deep breathing, and I just wait to see what's gonna happen. So didn't didn't oppose moving around the calendar because I knew what was coming. I didn't. And so on the issue of gender equity, which a number of the speakers addressed, I don't know who decided that Malibu would proclaim March as Red Cross Month, but as Suzanne noted, President of the United States has proclaimed March as Women's History Month and has done so for many years now. Additionally, March eighth was International Women's Day. As such, it came as great surprise to many of our residents that Mikey Pearson chose this time to replace Georgia Goldfarb, or actually to attempt to replace her, because he didn't do it, didn't quite do it yet. He's got the power to do it, but he hasn't exercised it on the Parks and Recreation Commission with a man, a much younger man at that. For anyone who did not see this past week's edition of the Malibu Times, it included multiple letters from Malibu residents deriding Mikey's decision as sexist, ageist, and just good old boy retributive politics. And and I had not heard until tonight possibly antisemitism. I I don't, I don't share that view, but I had not thought about it. Ironically, it was only a few months ago that Mikey and others on the city council commissioned an investigation of false allegations that I was guilty of gender-based treatment of the now former city manager. Allegations that were definitively refuted by the independent lawyer who conducted that investigation. Unsurprisingly, the word misogyny has now publicly surfaced by multiple residents with respect to Mikey. As the letters published this week in the Malibu Times point out, Steve Euring and I are the only council members who have appointed more than one woman to the city's five commissions. Paul has not appointed any women to any of the five commissions, and he also voted to replace Pat Healy with Lloyd Ahern on the MRCA advisory board. I think it might have been his motion. And Mikey joined Paul in voting to replace Pat Healy, and he's appointed only one woman to a commission who he's now decided to remove. Next week, I'll be appointing Joe Drummond to the Public Works Commission to replace Jim Palmer, who has graciously volunteered to step down from that position in order to help with the equity, the gender equity divide a little bit. As Jim informed the city clerk, quote, "I am resigning my commission because I believe a woman should be appointed in my place." And I'll I'll thank Jim for his service next week, two weeks from now. I call upon Mikey to reconsider his ill-advised decision to remove Georgia Goldfarb from the Parks and Recreation Commission. I also call upon Mikey, Paul, and Karen to each appoint no less than two commissioners who are not men. And I specifically encourage them to appoint at least one woman to the planning commission, which will be the only commission left without a woman, and it will consist entirely of old white men. It's not appropriate. Incidentally, I find it ironic that this kerfuffle involves Parks and Recreation, which is the vehicle for a very funny comedy series starring Amy Poehler, which also tackles the theme of gender bias in government. This is a case of life imitating art. You can't make this stuff up if you try, folks. On the issue of the tow yard, which Lance spoke about, well, a number of the city commissioners may think this is the least worst option or support it. Many residents have been in uproar about the recommendation to use the city's property on Point Doom as a tow yard. It's my understanding that proposal will need to go before the planning commission. And I suspect at least two planning commissioners, John Maza and Craig Hill, will be opposed to the proposal for multiple reasons. Not the least of which is that the property is not zoned for that use, and it sits adjacent to a residential neighborhood. For anyone who does not know it, John and Craig were appointed to the planning commission by Stephen. In the event the planning commission does approve the proposal by a split vote, I believe it will need to come before this body for approval for a variance. Unless I come to learn that the residents of the city support that proposal, which currently seems to be contrary to the will of the community, I'm not going to be inclined to support it, and I doubt that Steve will be inclined to do so either. I agree with the Public Safety Commission that we need to do something to facilitate the towing of vehicles belonging to scoff while tourists who deliberately disregard our parking laws, but a tow yard on Point Doom on property for which the city paid millions of dollars to create a public benefit doesn't seem to me to be the answer to that problem. More about Cutter. After Paul publicly announced that he'd met with representatives of Cutter in Beverly Hills to discuss some sort of financial transaction, Joe Drummond filed a public records request on that subject. I just learned of that this week. As a result of Joe's request, we now know that Paul understood before the meeting occurred that there were issues about meeting with representatives of Cutter. As Paul wrote in an email prior to the meeting in Beverly Hills, quote, "I think I stepped in it. I responded prior to my reading up on Cutter. Cutter's linked to Iran and in conflict with Saudi Arabia." Not that there are that, anything to be bragging about either. Wonder if I should call the State Department prior to the courtesy visit? Well, my question is why Paul didn't realize he should just should call the whole thing off, full stop? And why in the world would Paul publicize his admittedly questionable meeting on the heels of his unprecedented and self-serving vote to make himself the honorary mayor of Malibu for a second term in a row? Does anyone else see the irony in these decisions? People insist that I am the person who should not be representing the city because I will give us a bad name somehow. And yet this is what's going on. Like I said before, you really can't make this stuff up. Lastly, school separation, which was briefly touched upon by city manager. We had a closed session meeting to discuss the city's efforts to secure school separation from Santa Monica, Malibu Unified School District. I obviously can't talk about what we discussed. It is obvious to me, though, that a deal to accomplish our objectives consensually is either going to be extreme, cost prohibitive, or unavailable. I just don't see the Santa Monica School District moving. Maybe something miraculous has occurred during the mediation that I'm not aware of. So it seems to me the only practical chance of obtaining school separation is going to be through the adversarial legal process laid out statutorily. Even that process is far from guaranteed to yield success. And I do question whether the objective is going to be just, is going to justify the substantial costs we've already incurred, as well as the greater costs that lie ahead of us in pursuing this matter. But I understand it's a priority established by city council, prior city council. And I and it's supported by the parents of school-age students in Malibu, so I remain supportive of it. What I have to say, though, is in as much as this is a legal process, and I'm the only lawyer on the city council, I have to question why I am not on the city council subcommittee that's working with the lawyers to secure school separation, which is going to be done through a court process. Of course, the obvious answer to that question is that I've been blackballed from all meaningful committee assignments on account of my political views, which represent the twenty-four hundred fourteen residents who voted for my election and which seem to be abhorrent to a majority of the members of the city council. Again, you just cannot make this stuff up. So I welcome responses to any of these things, and those are my comments for this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Karen, would you like to go next?
Sure. Thanks, Paul. I will start with a few thank-yous. I'd like to thank Neil Goldberg and the American Red Cross. I appreciate the work that you do, Neil, and certainly the organization. And particularly in light of what's going on in the world right now. I just want to say thank you. Thank you to Lieutenant Fender. We, I think we all unanimously welcome your report today, this evening. Excuse me. And yeah, great, send a message, whether it's to visitors or residents. Enforcement is key, and I definitely appreciate that. Lance, thank you for making the report regarding public works and public safety and those two commissions working in cooperation with each other. I will set the record straight. I have two female commissioners. I'm not sure how that got missed, but I definitely appreciate both of their hard work and many hours that they spend working on the commissions I appointed them to. So I'm not sure how that got missed, but we have three council members who have two female commissioners. Moving on, I've received a lot of emails, phone calls, and everything else from people interested in continuing the Malibu Film Society in Malibu. And I just want to acknowledge this very deep level of community interest and let you know that I think there are many people working toward a solution there. I have no idea what that's going to be right now. But it seems to be a lot of people rowing in the same direction. One public speaker mentioned work not coming through the planning. Work not coming through the planning department quickly enough, and sadly, we learned today of another person leaving. The planning department, so. I don't think that means things are going to get done quicker. I'm not sure how quickly uh anybody leaving city staff can be replaced. But uh, we have many vacancies and uh. It would be great for everybody involved. To be able to get those filled. Um, regarding school district separation. Uh, yeah, we've had our weekly team meeting uh that's ongoing every Friday. Uh, we did have a closed session meeting regarding that. And then uh, as interim city manager McCleary said, we had. Uh, an all day mediation. Uh, the contents of which obviously cannot be disclosed. Um, regarding um Bruce's comment about uh not being. Uh, elected to uh the school district separation ad hoc committee. Bruce, I appreciate the fact, the fact that you are an attorney, but I think you realize uh we have. A deputy city attorney Christine Wood representing us in that effort. Um. And I just wanted to say for the record. I've heard you mention many times um the number of votes that you got. I think it was 2,414. I don't normally talk about this, but I did receive 2,855. And Mikey received. I'm not sure. Around 2,600, I think. So if we're going to talk about numbers, let's just talk about the actual numbers. Um. And why am I on the committee? Because I've been working on school district separation for many, many years. I think that made sense to my fellow council members. Who voted me to be on that ad hoc. And Mikey is a lifelong residence, attended our local schools, as did his, his children, as did my children. So that. That ad hoc certainly seems to make sense to me. Um. Well, also in regard to our local schools, uh, I was very happy. To be invited by the Malibu High School Associated Student Body. To serve as a judge at their annual talent show mask. On Thursday evening. Uh, that's a three night talent show, and I will say. It never disappoints. Uh, I welcome anybody to put it on their calendar for next March. It's really amazing. To see what the students do, and that event serves as a fundraiser, uh, so to help the kids pay for the prom. Um, moving on here. Uh, I've been working with Lost Virginist Malibu. Council of Government Executive Director Terry Dipple. Uh, as I am uh this year, the president of the Lost Virginist Malibu Cog. Uh, that might be. About it. Um. Hope I'm not leaving anything out. I think that's it for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Mikey.
Thank you, Paul. Um. Well, certainly feels like campaign season has started. Um, off to a rock is start here. Um. Charges of sexism, ageism, antisemitism and racism. Are so unfounded. It's such a low. Um, you obviously don't know my hiring history. You have no idea of all your. Research on the candidates, I guess. Um. And I'll just leave it at. Georgia, you and I had a long talk. I don't know if you're still here. I left you a message to talk again, and I haven't heard back, and I look forward to talking to you. Moving forward. I attended the CPA meeting, Clean Power Alliance monthly meeting. Ted, the CEO, or um, yeah, the CEO is here to speak tonight. Looking forward to that. The school separation meeting, um, the mediation was a long day. That was Saturday, and we've had a couple of other meetings as Karen spoke on as well. I also attended an administration and finance meeting with uh Steve in the last couple of weeks. As Karen mentioned, I um, I also was a judge at Mask on Friday night, the talent show. It never. Fails to blow my mind, the talent. And our local schools, it's such a great event. It's, it's literally emotional to see the caliber and passion. Of these kids at the high school and what they've been through and to pull this performance off. As Karen said, highly, highly recommend it. Every year. Um. I share a lot of people's concerns. Over getting the Malibu Film Society up and running. And that is one of the reasons that I've been working for over a year. To have our temporary use permit system structure come before us as a racist. And I know we've just had a lot, a lot of stuff going on in planning. Um, because it all ties in there, and what's happened there does not surprise me. It's happened to other events that we love in Malibu. And uh. I look forward to figuring out how we move forward on that successfully as soon as possible. I was. Unaware that Johnny Fane passed. It totally caught me off guard and missed that. Maybe because I was away last week. Um. Lots of memories as a kid. Guy was. Just a legend. Absolutely a legend. Um. Had a great talk while I was in Sacramento with Captain Fender. Really appreciate that. And uh, we spoke, spoke for quite a while. Really uh excited to work with you. Look forward to meeting you in person. And uh, thanks for the call. I really do appreciate that. Sort of my main. City council event was going to the Contract Cities Legislative Event in Sacramento last week. And that's an event where you hear from elected officials from the assembly and the senate. And other California agencies. Was uh, the first one was a bit different than normal in a different space. A little, it was good though. It was more intimate in a way. And some of the highlights, which I've shared with the city manager. Got to meet uh Rob Bonta, the Attorney General for the state of California. And learned there that they have a task force related to SB nine. And are glad to answer cities, any cities' questions, if they have any questions on. The law and um, how they're interpreting it. Also met the mayor from Paramount, California. Who has a street racing ordinance that sounded very interesting in a number of cities. Um, including me. I think once I went and met her and asked for a copy of that ordinance, several of the cities followed. So this isn't, this is a wide area issue. Um, I am reminded that I don't think I've received it yet, and I need to call her back. Um, I was really glad Steve to hear um, McCleary. About the solar app process. Um, I did run into a lot of cities that are using Solar App Plus. Which was a uh program for roof mounted solar to be approved very quickly with this app that I guess the state of California paid for. I don't know if that's what we're doing or not, but um, it was an interesting one to find that quite a few cities were using it successfully. Um, met the. Number two. Of Cal OES. Great speaker with a great story. Um. He comes from, I'm going to get it wrong. Louisiana, Arkansas, somewhere in the south that got completely obliterated by Katrina, like the town gone. And to hear his story, um, and his approach here in California is amazing. And the basic takeaway there was the same thing that I've been preaching. It all comes down to home hardening at the end of the day. The last line of defense is our homes and um. He uh also said he wants to make sure every city is closely in contact with his staff and that that's a open line of communication. I did manage to run into uh Senator Stern. Shared a few moments in the, and the Rotund. Kind of the. Big tower there, a big middle of the Capitol Building. Um, we talked about street racing as well. Um, he only had a few minutes though. And kind of the most maybe interesting thing I learned, which I did not know this. Was there was a number of cities there. That are addressing housing. For homelessness. In an interesting way I hadn't, I was unaware of, and it's called a mechanism called housing trusts. And so cities are getting together. Forming a housing trust. So that. They can work together in solving their homeless issues. So it also seems to mean it's not all, everything being equal. It's pooling resources so that. You know, some communities that maybe have more room for that. Or maybe get more of the money, et cetera, trying to address the situation on a, on a local, regional level. And from what I hear that's coming from our task force. I think looking at housing trusts for us might be something we should really think about and understand more about. Because for such an isolated city like us, it might make a lot of sense. To see if we can join in a housing trust. To deal with, uh, since we have no real infrastructure for it, as we know. To join with other cities and uh. That might make sense. And. Thank you, and those are my comments.
Thank you, Mikey. Steve, are you available?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Paul. Captain Fender, uh, if you're still here, thank you very, very much. I mean, if you can figure out how to stop these people from speeding on TCH. I think the residents to hold a parade for you up and down their coast. So uh, please give up the work. Thank you very, very much. It is important. Mikey, the homeless trust, I don't know. You, I think you'd be surprised at some of the stuff we're going to hear from homeless task force. I don't know if it's a homeless trust they were talking about, but they are looking at. A concept not unlike what you just talked about. Uh, so we'll see when we get that meeting with them, how far they've gotten along that, that path. Bill Sampson, uh Walt Lucille Keller. Uh, I, I, you, you brought this up a couple of weeks ago, and I, I have not forgotten it. I sent out a request, the last meeting test, if anybody has some good ideas of how we might be able to honor these folks. Let me know. I did get a bunch of, of comments back. Uh, the one that appears right now to make the most sense came from Suzanne Goldman and a couple of other people. And talked about the fact that Walt uh has spent a lot of time up at Charmley. Uh, working with the children up there when, when that was going on. And so the suggestion was maybe we could take the visitor center up there, rename it for Walt and uh Lucille and plant a tree in their honor. Uh, you know, we kicked that around. Bruce, Congressman Silverstein uh was kind enough to, you know, second, he was. Co-sponsored that to me if we could get that done. So I've got to do some work this week to find out what it takes to get that done. Uh, but I have not forgotten about that. I agree with you. I think we've got to do something for them sooner rather than later. So I will push that. As hard as I can to try and get that taken care of. And thank you for your suggestion. You, you were the person who brought it up. I want to give you full credit for that. Bruce mentioned that, that Jim Palmer is going, uh, going to resign and give his seat to Sue, uh, to Joe Drummond. And just this morning, 9:30, Jim Palmer. At my front door. Uh, he had just got back from Mexico, and I'll tell you what, the guy was happy, happiest I seen him. He was saying, look, I'm doing something really good for the city. I'm doing something good for women. I mean, it was one of these happy moments for Jim, so. Uh. Bruce, your suggestion that to work with him along with Joe, I think it's a good one. I think you made both of them happy, and I think it'll make our commissions equally good. So thank you very, very much for that. And you should have seen the smile on Jim's face. He was just really happy having been able to do this. Uh, Picasso. I thought I heard. That we were working on some, something to deal with Picasso. Is that, was I wrong in that, or is I? Are we doing anything, John?
We are, we are looking at ordinances that have been adopted by other cities and are considering bringing that forward to the planning commission for consideration.
Okay, does the city have, is the city council have to do anything to get that to happen, or is that? Moving along.
No, we, we've heard you loud and clear. We've heard the public loud and clear, and we are working diligently to bring that, bring that.
Thank, thank you very, very much, Bill. I think that'll be good news for you. Da, 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 da. I think everybody else talked about the meetings that we're in. Uh, administrative finance and the closed session and. You know, this. Thing with Georgiana. Mike, again, it's your call, right? You get to call and, and who you want to have there, but and, and. I, I don't know what happened, how it got there. All I can tell you is your timing is terrible. I mean, calling her up two days after she voted. Or she spoke to get Bruce on, this makes it look bad. So I hope you guys can get that reconciled and move it forward with a good conclusion. So thank you very much, Paul. Back to you.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, my report should be fairly short. Uh. I, I also was one of the judges for the mask thing, and I was also amazed at the talent of those kids and uh. You know, you sit down at something like that and you're expecting to have some cringeable moments. No cringeable moments, and there were a few moments there that were transcendent. The, these. Young people are obviously several of them are on their way to a, to a profession, and we will see them in the future. Uh, doing wonderful things everywhere. Uh, the, uh, on March 3rd, I went to a League of California Cities meeting. Down in Universal City. And it was all about reapportionment, and we got to see what was going on with the. We got to see what was going on with. Uh. The state of California and what had happened, and that resulted in. Uh, several conversations with different people, including a gentleman from Santa Monica. Who was uh talking about their experiences. Uh, as far as Picasso goes, uh, I, I wrote a. A, a formal complaint. Uh, back before, uh, I think it was in October. To the Department of Real Estate, which they acknowledged receiving. But asking them how these things are not, uh, how could they not be considered to be? Time shares. They're obviously time shares. It's, it's what's going on. And I can't believe that there is a way around it. And time shares are never a good deal for anybody and never a good deal for the community that they're in. The other thing I would like to report is I have offered. To, uh, I'm a vice president of an organization called Smart Coast California. And they have just opened their memberships to cities, and I have offered to donate. Pay for a membership for the city of Malibu, and you'll be hearing more about that soon. Along with what they're doing, including a meeting on uh May the 16th. About sea level rise and the various ways that it can be dealt with. As far as Qatar goes. I can assure everyone that there has been no further contact with Qatar. We're not doing anything with Qatar. I'm not doing anything with Qatar. Uh, and the reason I'm, I. Reported on it at the last meeting. Was because that's what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to report on the meetings we take. And whether or not anything happened. And we talked and nothing happened, and nothing is likely to happen. And that is about it for me. So I believe that takes us now. To item three consent calendar. Does anybody have any, have any items been pulled from the consent calendar by the public?
No, you don't have any items pulled by the public.
Are any, with the members of the, the council, would anyone like to pull any of them from the, the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull 3B5.
3B5? Anything else? Bruce?
You're muted, Bruce.
So I'll move to approve the consent calendar excluding 3B5.
I'll second.
We got a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 3B5. Kelsey, will you be kind enough to take the role?
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Crisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Uh, 3B5 has been pulled. And uh, Steve, would you like to tell us about this and what your questions and how we can go forward on this?
Yeah, I've got one, one question. I think I, I may have. Yeah, I've got one, one question. I think I, I may have asked Rob this before and I just. I believe this, uh, synchronization project also has something to do with moving that stoplight in front of Nobu. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. I, I have not seen that stoplight removal project of the new. Configuration for Nobu in front of the planning commission. Is it ever going to get there for them to take a look at before we do this? I just want to make sure someone's looked at that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, it's going to. I, and, and. I had the date in my head when it was going, it's coming very soon. It's going in there. Yeah, so it, it's going to. Uh, um, planning commission and that's going to be included in it, yes.
Okay, I'll move three B five then, Paul.
Okay, we have a second. I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kelsey, would you like to take the role?
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Crisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That takes us to item six A. I'm sorry. It just stuck. Six A. This is a report from the Clean Power Alliance, so we are going to receive a presentation from CPA. Who do we have to give a set presentation?
You do have Ted Bardak here. I think he's just getting the muted now.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. Um, I think my video has stopped, but that's okay. I can. Be a voice here and, um. Uh, show you this presentation and happy to answer any questions, um, at, uh, at the end. Um, again, I'm Ted Bartiky. I'm Chief Executive Officer of Clean Power Alliance. Um, and thank you for the invitation to be here. Uh, to talk, give you a little update on where we're at and. Address some, uh, concerns about, uh, bills and rates that were, uh, have come up in the last month or so. And again, uh, happy to take any questions. If I could go to the next slide, please. So, um, I, I think most of you do know this, but for any of, uh, your constituents or residents who are. Um, watching, I just want to, uh, provide this brief overview. Um, Clean Power Alliance, we're a not-for-profit electricity supplier. We offer clean renewable energy at competitive rates. Um, as you see from the diagram, we source. Clean energy, uh, we put it on the grid. Uh, and SCE delivers it, uh, to our customers. Um, SCE, uh, sends a joint monthly bill. It includes, uh. Charges for electricity, um, delivery. Uh, which are the same for all customers and then Clean Power Alliance charges for electricity supply, uh, and generation. Um, Clean Power Alliance, uh, charges are not an added fee. Uh, they simply replace the SCE supply and generation charges that, uh. Previously appeared on, on folks' bills or still do appear on folks' bills. Uh, if they remain a customer of Edison for both delivery and generation. Uh, next slide, please. Um, little bit more on the basics. So we are a JPA. Uh, Malibu is one of thirty-two, uh, communities, uh, across LA and Ventura County. Uh, we serve approximately one million customer accounts. You'll see we've got a good concentration, uh, both up and down the coast. Uh, as well as with a number of your neighboring cities in Agora, Calabasas, Westlake Village, Thousand Oaks. Um, so you're in good company. Um, we are the fifth largest electricity provider in California, which gives us. Uh, heft and, and good, uh, response when we buy electricity. And, um, one of the things we've, uh, been come to known for and you are part of this. Uh, is that we have more customers receiving one hundred percent renewable energy than any other utility in the country. Um, it's something we're very proud of and, uh, we're, uh, excited that Malibu and many, many, many of its residents. Uh, and businesses are part of that. Uh, we offer a choice of rates and programs, um, above and beyond those offered by, uh, SC. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so one of the, uh, one of our sort of reasons for existence is bringing. A level of choice, um, to, uh, and competition. Uh, to what has been previously monopoly. Um, and, uh, doing so on a not-for-profit basis. Um, we offer three rates, uh, lean power, clean power and one hundred percent green power. Uh, and, um, they're at different price points and, um, different, uh, levels of renewable energy. Um, we're very excited and you'll see this in a few minutes that, uh, when we started out, uh, the hundred percent green power. Uh, was about nine percent more expensive than clean power. Um, and that differential is now down to about three percent. Um, we've been very successful in, uh, contracting for long-term renewable energy that has driven down the costs. Of GHT free, um, electricity. Uh, next slide, please. So, uh, just a little history with CPA and Malibu, um. Uh, you all joined, uh, in December of twenty eighteen and then in December of twenty twenty, you approved. Uh, the selection of one hundred percent green power as the default electricity choice for CPA customers. Uh, what that means is that if, if, uh, a customer does not make an affirmative choice. To, uh, opt for clean power or lean power or, uh, decide to get their generation services from Edison. They are automatically put on that one hundred percent green power rate. Uh, that's been in effect now for, uh, a, a, a couple of years and you can see. Uh, from those participation rates, ninety-seven percent participation rate. Uh, most customers, ninety-seven percent of them have stayed with CPA. And most of them indeed have stayed at the hundred percent green, uh, level. Uh, we, uh, uh, and, and via that, um, your residents and businesses and city itself have, um. Uh, successfully reduced, um, over thirty thousand metric tons of greenhouse gas emissions. Um, which is a pretty big number for, um, a relatively, uh, uh, small city. Um, like Malibu with just about, um, seven thousand customers. Um, so, uh, I think you should all be, um, uh, pleased with that. And, uh, and we're very excited to continue to serve that hundred percent renewable product. To our customers in Malibu. Uh, next slide, please. So, um, over the course of December and January. Um, and into the beginning of February, there were a number of customer billing concerns and we, we've, um, kind of. Uh, uh, divided them into three categories. So, um, the first is that S, there were a number of SCE rates. Um, and billing changes and frankly errors that occurred over that time period. So SCE delivery rates, these are the ones that all customers pay equally. Um, increased in October. And December and again in January. And in fact, over the past, uh, twelve months, uh, they have increased about eighteen percent. Um, so, uh, as usage increases. Um, people start to notice, uh, those, uh, delivery rate increases and so that was one source of. Of, uh, frustration and concern. The second thing is that in, um, I remember that SCE, uh, sends one bill. It's got their charges and our charges. Um, during, in December, um, almost thirty percent of the customers in Malibu. Did not get their Clean Power Alliance charges on their bill. Um, uh, Edison sent out bills with just their own charges, just their delivery rates. Uh, and then in, uh, in January, customers got essentially a makeup bill. Which had December charges and January charges for Clean Power Alliance as well as January charges for SCE. Uh, this was an error attributed to, uh, SCE's new billing system. That, uh, went into, uh, that was brought on, um, in March of last year. But this was the first holiday time that, uh, they had been through in a full year cycle. And, um, uh, they omitted to, uh, including our charges. So one thing that, so for those customers who got their bills in late January, if they were impacted. They would have gotten an artificially low bill in December and then they got, uh, a makeup bill or a catch-up bill, uh, in January. Um, this is not good, uh, for our customers. We, um, apologize. Uh, we didn't have anything to do with it, but, uh, uh. And the apology is deserved nonetheless. Um, uh, second item is that, uh, while all this was happening during the holidays. Um, December was especially cold and rainy. Um, and that, uh, often leads to increased energy use. In fact, in a coastal environment like, uh, Malibu. Um, December actually can be the largest time of, uh, electricity use. Um, and that can be for celebrations, decorations, but it can also be as simple as, um, spare electric space heaters that get brought out. From the closet and, uh, and, uh, get plugged in and used and it was cold, rainy. Rain also, believe it or not, can increase electricity usage, uh, because of sump pumps. For folks who have sump pumps might have basements or other areas where they're pumping out water. Um, that was another reason for increased electricity use. Uh, and then in the third here, I'm just want to note, our generation rates have not changed since July of twenty twenty-one, so folks. Saw what they think was an abnormally high bill is not our charges. Um, our, our rates, uh, again, have been the same since Ju- July of twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. We're also going through a, a, a. A time of use transition, which I'll talk about separately on the next slide. Um, but there were a few customers who had their legacy time of use rates ended in, in December. Um, that was less than fifty customers in Malibu. Um, but, uh, uh, that could have led to a, uh, increase in, in their bills. Um, and finally, some good news to report that on March first, um, the PCIA, which is an exit fee that our customers. Uh, paid directly to Edison, um, fell by eighty-five percent. Which men, means that for the next four months until we set our rates. Um, uh, CPA customers will see a bill reduction of about six to seven percent. Uh, uh, on their bills, um, for the next, uh, four months. Um, so good news there, bit of a, a, a rate reduction, uh, although it is, um, somewhat temporary. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so, uh, uh, customers will continue to see, uh, uh, some changes to their bills. Um, over the next several months, um, because residential customers. Uh, are being defaulted into, uh, time of use rates. Now customers can opt out of that. They will have received, um, by the time the, the transition is done. Uh, here in March, uh, three notices, three, uh, letters in the mail. Uh, uh, talking about folks' options. But what time of use does is it, uh, encourages people to use, um, less energy during peak hours. Those peak hours are both the most expensive hours to serve, uh, uh, electricity in the state as well as the dirtiest. So, um, uh, uh, if you use your, um, electricity during the day. Uh, and late at night, um, it is not only cheaper but also cleaner. And so we are encouraging folks to, um, pay attention to what, when they're using their electricity. Uh, and they can both save money and reduce their environmental footprint. Uh, by avoiding, uh, electricity as much as possible between those, those peak periods. A good part about this is that, um, we are offering built protection for the first twelve months. So, uh, if, uh, as a result of staying on a time of use rate. Um, it's calculated that under a, an old flat rate, you would have, um, uh. Been financially better off. We will refund, uh, that difference, um, at the end of the twelve months. Gives a good time for folks to, to try it out, uh, see how it goes and, uh, hopefully we can get everybody contributing. Uh, next slide, please. So a little bit of our twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three rate outlook. Um, so for the first three years of our operation, CPA had the lowest rates available in the region. Um, in twenty twenty-one, all of our rates became higher for the first time in conjunction with the rising, uh, PCIA and other increases. To energy costs. Um, uh, I think both, uh, uh, Mikey and, and, um. Steve will, will remember, we, we said at the time that we thought Edison's rates, uh, were too low. Uh, and that's why we were going to be more expensive. And, uh, in fact, that turned out to be true. Um, Edison under collected by seven hundred million dollars last year. And on March first, their, uh, generation rates went up by eighteen percent. Um, so we're looking at, uh, our rates, um, uh, in for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And early guidance that we, uh, provided to, uh, the board last. Um. Uh, I think it was just last week or maybe, uh, ten days ago. Um, is that our rates are likely to be, um, to go up slightly, but that a customer's bill. Um, is, uh, going to stay relatively flat. And that we're going to get back to our, our, um, very competitive rate levels. You'll see that. Um, we've been a little bit more expensive than, uh, SCE's base rate. Um, in January, uh, come this summer, we'll be back, uh, in a good competitive spirit. Uh, next slide, please. The next slide? Yeah. So I want to just finish up with, uh, our community programs. Um, the first is, uh, Power Ready where we are, um. Offering a free solar-generated backup power system, uh, for, uh, helping with resiliency and outages. To critical facilities in our, in our communities. We, uh, in facilities owned by our member agencies, uh, we've been in discussions with, uh, your staff. Uh, about a, um, uh, possible, uh, clean energy backup power system for City Hall. Uh, we're excited to do that. Um, uh, the MOU development is underway. Um, we're likely to see, we know you've, uh, experienced some staffing challenges. Uh, and have a lot of other work going on. We, uh, I, I hope that we can come to an agreement. And, uh, get you all, uh, uh, one of these systems probably in the second round of our, our RFO. That would be released either later this year or early twenty twenty-three. Um, in, uh, uh, next, early next month, we'll be launching, uh. A thirteen million dollar E V charger incentive program for, um, publicly available E V chargers. Uh, charging stations in, in LA County. Uh, if you look at the studies, one of the things that's holding, uh, uh, adoption of EVs back. Is, um, not the ability to charge at home, uh, but the ability to charge when you're out and about. So we'll be looking, uh, uh, really to enhance the installation of, uh, publicly available chargers. Um, as well as get them into apartment buildings, which can also, uh, be places that, um, sometimes are difficult. Uh, to access, uh, a charging infrastructure. Uh, next slide, please. Um, we have, uh, power response incentives which allow customers to save up to two hundred dollars a year. By, um, allowing us to, uh, co-manage their smart thermostat. Um, and, uh, we've, we've, uh, seen really robust, um, participation in, in just a few months that this has been launched. Um, encourage folks to check us out, uh, at CleanPowerAlliance dot power response. And then finally, um, uh, there, we have been part of a consortium of utilities implementing. Uh, the California Rearage Payment Program, um, which, uh, was some COVID relief. Um, sixteen million dollars, uh, approved for our customers and distributed, um, this past couple of months. Uh, to customers who fell behind on their bills, were unable to pay. Um, during the, uh, initial, uh, portion of shelter in place from mid-March twenty twenty to mid-June twenty twenty-one. So, uh, we're very happy that we've been, um, getting access to that funds. Uh, and our customers have not had to apply for it. If they're eligible, it, uh, is automatically applied to their bill. So, uh, I will stop there and, um, see if there are any questions.
Who would be taking public comment first and then council comments? So who do we have to speak to us, Kelsey?
Yes, first we have Lonnie Gordon, followed by Ryan.
Lonnie, are you available?
Lonnie, you should see a pop-up asking you to unmute. If Lonnie's not available at the moment, we can move on to Ryan and circle back to her.
Okay. Hi, Ryan, are you available?
Uh, yes, I recall when Lou and Laura were on council and this, uh, our initial presentation was made. Yes, I recall when Lou and Laura were on council and this initial presentation was made to the city. That at least two of the three rate plans proposed by what was then called the. Community Choice Aggregation Project here, that was the Joint Powers Authority. They're looking really for commitments so that they could go out and buy blocks of power contracts into the future. With solar farms that were under consideration or under construction and so forth. And so the cost of solar equipment way back when is what we're paying for right now. Because we got into those kinds of contracts. It didn't take long and in December of 2020, then the whole system got changed. And the council jerked everybody up into the highest price rate tier. That was an overstep. I disagreed with it at the time. Because there is no actual limit. On the percentage of green or clean power in any of these rate plans, except for the one called 100%. And I had an electric car in the eighties and you know, it just wasn't suitable for Malibu at the time. So I I get it, I understand, I love electricity. But you really box yourself into a corner with this 100% thing. Because you're not going to get solar after dark. We've already seen this price penalty issue between 4:00 and 9:00 PM for time of use. And what are you going to ban charging electric cars between 4:00 and 9:00 PM? Because one of those things is really going to just wipe out almost everything else. Everybody's putting off cook a dinner or something because they have an electric stove. This is is really hurting the people who live in multifamily, all-electric housing. There should be an extra rate for people who have to heat with space heating of any type. And I don't see that any longer. But next, there, since there is no limit that they can, they can buy 100% and sell it at the whatever, the lean or green or whatever's in between. Rate. In fact, what CPA needs to do now is to commit to a fourth rate plan or maybe a fifth. For those those households that are all electric and have to heat with electricity. And can't just put off cooking dinner or heating the house between 4:00 and 9:00 PM. Should not pay triple or quadruple the price for their electricity. I'm proposing that CPA get a rate plan that's 95%. Green, because it is that minor flexibility of being able to purchase power. To avoid rolling blackouts and so forth. That you're limited to only buying 100% contractually, and that is a price disadvantage that we must pay for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
And next we have a raised hand from Bobby, and then we'll try to circle back to Lonnie Gordon.
Bobby, are you available?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can.
All right, yeah. First of all, I just wanted to say I'm a city worker here in town. And this Alex guy that's in here. He just goes around and harasses people. I don't know what he has a problem with with the city workers, but. I was kind of wanting to talk to everybody about it, and he actually showed up tonight, so I don't know if maybe he can comment on it. But yeah, he he goes around and videos us while we're working. And says he's after the mayor for some reason. I don't personally know what his problem is, but.
He likes old ladies, too.
I don't know, he's. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention.
This this item's about clean power. Do you have anything to say about clean power?
Oh, I'm sorry about that. No, that's it for now, then.
Thank you very much.
And let's see if we can get Lonnie Gordon unmuted.
Are you available, Lonnie?
It looks like Lonnie actually just left the meeting. So we do now have a raised hand from someone named Stone, so we'll hear his comment next.
Hi, Stone, are you available? And can you talk to us about the Clean Power Alliance?
And Mayor, not seeing any more raised hands in Zoom, and I don't see that Lonnie Gordon's come back. That concludes public comment.
I see Steve's hand raised, so let's open with Steve Euring.
Okay, just and and Kelsey, Lonnie Gordon has been calling me for a long time with questions on her bill. So if there's any way to get her on so she can ask her questions, I think that would be a very good thing to do because.
Just log back on.
She did just rejoin the meeting, so if you give us a second here, Lonnie, we're going to ask you to unmute.
In all the meetings, can you hear me?
Good, can hear you.
In all the meetings I've joined, whether it's planning or commission, I have never had such a problem in joining before. So I'm very sorry. I I'm leading getting to this meeting because I had something else I had to take care of. But this is not just about CPA, this is about Southern California Edison as well. And I started a group on Nextdoor about people whose bills had gone up. Skyrocketed up. From 200 to $1,000. Mine went up from 1,200 to 775 dollars. I have texted, I have. Called, and I have tried to connect with the person who contacted me from the Southern California Edison. Consumer Division who deals with the CPUC issues. I have never heard back from him, so I filed another complaint. There is something definitely wrong with what is going on. And I don't know how many other people filed a CPUC complaint. And I'm not blaming it on California Power Alliance. Because they were very nice when they spoke with me, but they blamed it on SCE. So we need to get to the bottom of what's happening here, and this is just not acceptable. I know, I'm hoping this is a preliminary approach to what we're dealing with here. And that I will in. Another week or so be able to give you more information. Right now is not a good night for me. But I do appreciate your listening to what I have to say, and I do want you to take into consideration that this is affecting a lot of people in Malibu, not just me. There are hundreds of people who are next door that that have the same story I do. Mine seemed to be a little different because I changed down my analog meter, and I've now contacted Southern California Edison about. Putting back in then a regular meter and then covering with some kind of a device so I don't get EMFs from it. You all know me with the EMFs, the 5G stuff. There's something going on, and we need to check it out, and you are the guys who need to check it out. I really appreciate what you do. I appreciate all the time you put in. There are so many issues that you have to deal with on a daily basis. But this is a really big one. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Lonnie. Steve, would you like to pick up again, please?
Uh, yeah, still unmuted. Yeah, and you know, it's a lot, again, I've spoken to Lonnie now a number of times. Maybe we've got to get someone from SEC to show up to answer some of the questions and explain it to her. Because I mean, this issue is obviously bothering her and what about a group of people she's dealing with. And she's right, we may be the only ones that can bring Southern California Edison in to actually have a meeting. And the only comment I wanted to have was Ted, I participated in some of your meetings. And I walk away every time really impressed with the quality of staff work your people are doing. You know, I I walk away saying the. The decisions you're making are based on some very, very good work by your staff people. So I just want to congratulate you for that. I think you, you know, it's really impressive every time I attend one of your meetings. That's it, Paul.
Thank you, Steve. Karen?
Thank you. I was contacted by one member of the public just recently, after I had already heard some things about this. First of all, Ted, thank you for your presentation. I think everybody would be wise to check out the CleanPowerAlliance.org website. I know that the council, I think, did this in two parts. At first adopted, and this was before I was elected, I think at first the council adopted the Clean Power Alliance. Whatever we want to call this inclusion and went with, I think it was a lower. A lower option, 80% or something like that. And then I believe it was the first meeting where Mikey and I were on the council. The vote was brought to us to go with 100%. I might have the timing wrong, but in any case. Is there not an opt-out or or a reduced rate, reduced level of participation available? To our residents? That's my impression. That's one question, if anybody can tell me. Or if Ted might be able to answer that. The next thing is. It seems to me that there is communication missing between the Clean Power Alliance and Edison. Or maybe that needs to go through us. I contacted our Edison liaison. He is relatively new to this assignment. I don't know if that means he's relatively new to Edison. I didn't hear anything about any of this. I I got an answer saying, I'm not sure what's going on. I'll get back to you. We would all be much better off with more information and more communication for us as a city and a council and for the residents. So I'm not sure who needs to run with that. Steve McClary, I see you nodding your head. We need to get better information out to people. That's that's my request and recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Bruce?
Thanks, Paul. So first of all, I was encouraged to hear the this concept that after 12 months of the time of use rate being applied. They're going to do a look back, and it's it sounds like basically you get 12 months. Where you're going to get the lesser of whatever your charges are. That's that's good. I like that. Because I was wondering if there was going to be an analysis done where people can understand what their rates would have been under the rate, under the other plan. So it sounds like there's nothing to lose, if I understand that correctly, from using the time of use for the next 12 months. Because if it turns out it's more expensive than it would have been, you're going to get a rebate. But if it's not, if it's less expensive, you've got the better plan. That's good. On the rates, I have to say, and I have not looked into why it's the case, but I mean, I've experienced this too. I mean, my, until about a year ago, maybe 18 months ago, my my electric bill was running between 200 and 300 dollars a month. Normally, and in the summer, about 50% more than that. For the past 18 months, it's been averaging 600 to 800 dollars a month, and it's even hit 1,200 in the summer. I I just don't, I mean, you know, I understand things have gotten more expensive. But that's like a 150, 200% increase. I don't think that that's consistent with the economy. So I don't, and it, you know, I don't know if that correlates with when we switched or not. But it's been a very, it was a very strange thing to get hit with electric bills over $1,000 for a small home that historically never had a bill more than 500 or 600 dollars. You know, and I'm not griping about my bill. I'm just I'm just confirming confirming what I'm hearing from a number of members of the community. That's it.
Thank you, Bruce. Steve, I see your hand raised. McClary?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to briefly respond to the comments from the council members. I will follow up with our representative from Southern California Edison. We actually have a meeting scheduled with our new representative prior to the next council meeting on March 28th. So I will get some more information for the council and the community. And we will see if we can get the Edison rep to also come and speak at a future council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Mikey, I see your hand.
I I just want to, I know Ted's going to wrap up and answer some of these questions, but I just want to thank you, Ted, for coming and making the presentation. It's it's not lost on me as the our CPA person that. Understanding anything to do with energy and transmission and rates is it's highly complex. It is not simple. So I I hear the council's. Point that you have more information, the better it is, even as I sit there at these meetings. You know, you have to pay a lot of attention to follow what goes on and getting energy developed and to us. And pricing it out where it makes sense. So I just want to thank you, Ted, for coming, and I really, really appreciate it.
And I want to just take a second to thank Ted as well. The the fact that Southern California Edison has raised our transmission rates three times within the last year and. I guess a year and a quarter, year and a half. Definitely has something to do with it, and that that is. It has all, everything to do with the fact that. You know, we. The public. We get to pay for repairing their damaged lines, and when they burn down something, we get to pay their fines. So I'm a Southern California Edison is nobody's favorite right now. I would love to see them do whatever undergrounding they can do. And I'm very encouraged when I heard at our last meeting. That Rob says there's money out there to underground some of these lines in Malibu. So I'm going to put Ted back on. And is there anybody else we should be talking to?
Ted? Great, thank you, thank you. I want to thank Steve for complimenting our our staff. You know, we're we're a startup and we're four years in and and you know, my my greatest joy is having recruited a top-notch staff. So thank you, Steve, for recognizing that. Um, a council member Silverstein. Yes, what you noted, both things you noted are indeed true. The first is that time of use is a no-regrets strategy. And and so we will be, you know, there's there's downside protection. And and we we encourage folks to check things out, how it goes this year, and then they can then they can switch. On the second thing is, yes, bills have gone up. I think it would be good to ask the Edison folks when they come before you. What's are the good, what are the components of why those delivery charges have gone up so much? I will tell you, when we started Clean Power Alliance, about 50% of the charges were Edison charges. And 50% of the charges on a bill were Clean Power Alliance. It's now two-thirds Edison and one-third Clean Power Alliance, and we haven't changed rates much. So you can see what's just sort of going on. While electricity prices are a commodity and they move up and down year to year, the actual electrons. The the amount of both deferred investment as well as new investment that Edison is. Putting on ratepayers now is is pretty significant. Um, I, I, council member. Oh, I'm gonna, I'm just going to call you Karen because I'm going to butcher your last name, so I'm sorry. The people do have a choice. So Clean Power Alliance customers can opt, if they're currently on the 100% green rate, they have three options. They can opt down to clean power, which is our middle rate. They can opt down to lean power, which is our most affordable rate and comes at a discount to Edison. Or they can opt out and be with Edison for both delivery and generation services. So people have three options. It takes five minutes to do that automatically via the web or to call our call center. And thank you, Ms. Gordon, for saying that our call center folks treated you right. I'm sorry we couldn't resolve all of your problems, but I appreciate hearing about that. So people always have the choices, and we encourage people, as you did, to visit our website to learn about those choices. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Ted. If there's nothing else, that takes us to item 7B.
I was off by 20 minutes on my estimate.
Well, it's it's not a bad error, Bruce. I appreciate your your effort to keep it within the. I appreciate your, your effort to keep it within the twenty. Do we have? Mikey, would you like to address this issue?
Yeah, well, it sounds like people have read it. It's certainly
Public comments?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Well, hang on, I haven't delivered a report yet, so hang on one sec. This certainly was not meant to be a controversial item at all. Quite the opposite. The idea here is pretty much just well-known that cities and well-functioning organizations often have the help facilitator to make sure that their governing body runs as efficiently for that entity as possible. There's no other plan here. There's no secret backdoor plan on this. Nothing other than we struggled a bit as a council, and we have something really important coming up here, really, really important, and that's our fiscal year is going to come up, and we have decisions to make on the work plan, and we have decisions to make on our priorities and goals. And I've mostly heard from the people at these meetings and around town that, you know, the better and more efficient we can work as a unit, the better. So that, that was my sole intent there. No other plan at all other than, you know, same thing as the city of Agora did, the city of Westlake Village is done, the city of Santa Paula is done. I think, you know, Calabasas, I can't remember if they did it or just talked about it. But cities all over the place bring in people to help with goal-setting and sort of just, you know, moving forward successfully. So that literally was the genesis of the idea. And go ahead and go to the, go to the public comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelsey, do we have any public speakers signed up?
Yes, we have eleven speakers signed up. The first you are Joe Drummond, followed by Suzanne Gildman, Bill Sampson, and Jefferson Wagner. We'll hear from Joe Drummond first.
Thank you, Joe. Are you available?
Hi, yes. I, I'm hearing you, Michael, but I'm sure the plan by the council majority is that this facilitator is there to fix Bruce. I do believe this item is kind of ridiculous to the community at large. The only person that's being bashed by the city council and prevented twice from being the, I believe, first Jewish mayor of Malibu, as well as being shunned from several committees, is Bruce Silverstein, and the only persons on council's behavior that needs to be acknowledged and modified from creating this cycle of abuse is from the council majority of Karen Ferrer, Mikey Pearson, and Paul Grisanti. Also, Karen, you said you deserved to be on the school separation committee over Bruce because of your long-time involvement, which I believe is soon reaching to have been fourteen years on. And this is with zero success. Any CEO of a company would have been removed after only one year of no resolution. I understand the navigating of the county takes some time, but not this long with only positive, with not any positive outcome in sight. An attorney would have helped this cause likely better using the law to our advantage. For the three majority council members to accept their bad behavior and by making a commitment to stop it and change the bad decisions made can be the only way to cure this and move forward with the first step being Paul Grisanti steps down as mayor and Bruce Silverstein be put in his rightful position. It doesn't matter how many votes you receive, but it does matter that he did receive the most votes of the three as per City Council Policy Number Thirty-Three. No amount of time, therapy, facilitating, or money can undo this wrong. So please stop ignoring the public comments tonight and do your due diligence for the sake of your residents, your leadership, and our community, and fix yourselves by adhering to the city council policies and showing some kindness and respect to your fellow council member despite his beliefs and culture that you don't appreciate. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Who's our next speaker?
It would be Suzanne Gildman, but I don't see her in the meeting. We'll try to circle back, and we'll hear from Bill Sampson next, followed by Jefferson Wagner and Ryan.
Hi, Bill, are you available?
I am. You have my written comments. This is an example of comedy writing itself. I want you to know that any criticism of this plan is wholly unfair. Mikey has been mine and Riva's life coach for the last several months, with Karen coming along when she could. Plant-based ceremonies have been led by Paul and his fellow Trump donors into Panga during full moons. Our version of Burning Man has happened with Riva lighting a huge effigy of Bruce. They have helped me, and they'll help you, reach your optimum maximum peak mental performance and, and your emotional intelligence. I've also been focusing on my facial hair. It might even work on the top of my head, which might be of interest to Steve, and I think. This, this is a long journey to reach your inner warrior. When Mikey, Karen, Paul, and I practiced our trust falls, it creates a mindset of peak performance, enabling us to maximize our environmental destruction, mega mansion, strip mall visions. Each morning, we can manifest these by speaking into the mirror and calmly yet powerfully saying, I am a Malibu real estate tiger. No one will tame me. After we have used these core competencies to shift our paradigms into reverse, we can spend tens of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money on taxpayer-funded facilitators, faith healers, astrologers, numerologists, snake oil salesmen, life coaches, business coaches, tarot code readers, and assorted other charlatans. You have got to be kidding. You can't, you really must be making this stuff up. As I said in my written comments, Karen, Mikey, and Paul, you need to lay your heads on your desk, face the corner, and remain silent, preferably until the ends of your respective terms. This is a waste of money. It's a terrible idea. The three of you have abused not Bruce. He can take it. He's used to it. He's a lawyer. He does it for a living. You have abused those of us who voted for him. You have absolutely taken away our voice. You should be ashamed of yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
And our next speaker, we have Jefferson Wagner. Bear with us. We have a few people in the meeting under that name.
I wonder if any of them are Jefferson.
Good evening, council. Am I here?
We hear you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your efforts on behalf of the community and wish you a happy evening through all of the drama that's taken place earlier. Well, trying to move on, I participated in Malibu City Council for eight years, and we did not have anything like this during my eight years on council. However, there might be some other alternatives for you to explore. California Strategies has these programs already, and as I remember, we are paying California Strategies for their Sacramento work. So that might be one of the considerations. As for what I've read on seven B, I would encourage you to explore other possibilities rather than what's proposed now. So good luck with this item. But you might look to California Strategies. You're already paying for this kind of service. Thank you, council. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Jefferson.
Our next speaker is Ryan, followed by Rosemary Ives.
Hi, Ryan, are you available?
Yes, I'm here. A program like this might be appropriate under different circumstances. In this case, because I think, well, I think a lot of people know what's really going on, we would just say you need to all, I would say, woman up. Maybe you first, Paul. The issues are latent from disregard to government code, government procedure, disclosure of fact. These two reports are great examples of that, where for six months you kept the truth buried and withheld from the public, and you milked those six months to beat and criticize and vilify a fellow council member from the dais with false accusations of things you knew were false because they were disproven by your own and chosen investigator, and that's reprehensible. I don't think a group therapy session is going to exonerate you from what the three of you did. And it's, what you need is an intervention. And this is not council training. I don't believe that the funding category is appropriate to be used for this purpose of what really needs to happen. You can, you can call it training, but it has nothing to do with that. It has to, to do with three people who want to get their way and will basically lie, cheat, and steal to do it because you violated the public trust and probably some codes along the way, including the California Public Records Act. And I hate to have to refer to that, but that was a state law that y'all took an oath to support and the voters of California approved. And when Riva didn't want to comply with it, and you three backed her up and tried to blame it on Bruce. And so now you want to clear the air now that you got caught and exposed and a political, hey, we went off to, you know, Disneyland and had a great time, and now we're all fine, is never, ever gonna clear what you did because there's accountability. And I don't want to wait till November to the voting to correct this problem. But the problem is really individualized, and the city's health plan provides for therapy. Under its plan, it will cost the taxpayers zero. Now, I would suggest the three of you go find somebody who will work with you so that you can be civil and get, the only training that you guys need is an ethics convention. And you need to, to really have some Brown Act training for all the city council and staff people just, just to learn to abide by the laws and the codes, and maybe we won't try and blame it on a, we can't get along issue. It's a diversion. Sorry, thank you.
Our next speaker is Rosemary Ives, followed by Alex Stein.
Hi, Rosemary, are you available?
Okay, here I am.
We hear you.
Yeah, saying hi. Thank you for letting me talk. I oppose a mediator to counsel our five adult council members. There are a few basic rules of life. Basically, think positively, be kind to each other, and smile, be gracious, polite, and have some humorous and common, have, be humor, humorous, and have common sense. And also show a happy face, even if you are very unhappy. It's easy to be unhappy during COVID times, of course, and try to understand that another person thinks differently than you do. And that thing, I think that will really help you, and I don't think you need any professional intervention. I think the city can save that money, and you'd rather go for a picnic or something where you have fun or go to a comedy show and just laugh. That's what you guys need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Our next speaker is Alex Stein, followed by Brian Wellington. We do have two Alex Steins indicating they'd like to speak, so we'll start with the first one.
Well, this is the real Alex Stein. I don't know what the other impersonator is, but it makes sense, though, that Mikey would want to hire an independent person to come do team-building exercises because if you guys go to Mikey from Malibu, you go to his Instagram, you'll just see he was in Sacramento, and he was there supposedly on work, yet he was there with his kids the whole time with his grandchildren. So Mikey's a specialist at using the government to pay for his personal endeavors, so I wouldn't be surprised. Oh, I'm sure he wants to go to a spa retreat. I mean, you guys want to go to Honolulu and do this team-building exercise? And that's the type of person Mikey is. We've seen his, his track record is actually absolutely ridiculous, but you really need to go to his Instagram. You'll see, he also calls himself a business coach. See, that's the problem, is your job is to come together like adults, but see, you want to outsource everything because you've never actually worked a day in your life. Somebody that actually has to work, you have to go in and you have to do this team-building exercise together. You need to put, it, it needs to be water off a duck's back, water under the bridge, whatever cliche you want to talk about. You have to put that all aside and focus on the people of Malibu. You have nearly thirteen thousand people. It's not a huge city. You can actually affect change. You can actually help these people, but instead you want to use your ego and said you want to have personal vendettas towards people, and now you want to carry it to the level where you have to call, call in a life coach. Well, listen, these people that got there, they don't need a life coach to get along. We need to be adults. We're not in high school. This isn't junior high where you get mad at people and say, oh, I'm going to go to the principal's office. The principal will handle it. No, you're an adult, Mikey. You know that. And if you call yourself a businessman, why don't you show it? Why don't you do some hard work? And then when you go to Sacramento, why don't you spend the, you're, the whole time you're on social media with your grandchildren? I don't see one social media post of you doing any actual work, yet if you look at your page, you're talking, you're holding your mayor, you're holding all your stuff, you're, you're showing all your work stuff in the past, but yet you're in Sacramento lollygagging, using taxpayer money, having a personal vacation and saying, oh, I talked to him, I talked. You can talk to those people on the phone. You don't need to go to Sacramento to do that, but we know you went to Sacramento on personal business. So when I see this, and I see that you're trying to hire a third-party person to handle your business that you got elected to do. You got elected to be able to get along with other council members. It's that simple. You didn't get elected to hire somebody to come in, and you know this. If you hire a person, it's only going to make it worse. You're only going to hire somebody, and the other people aren't going to like them because nobody's, you guys can't even agree on what to eat for dinner. You guys can't agree on one thing, so you're going to try to hire a third-party person to come in. You know that's going to be a total sham. And that's the issue, is that we have elected politicians that don't even want to do the work that they're elected to do. They want to hire people to make us all get along. But at the end of the day, an adult is be able to put your personal differences aside and look out for your constituents. You don't do that. All you look out is for your own ego. You just want to hire somebody to come in and maybe be on your side and pat you on the back because you're so insecure about your position. You're not even willing to take charge and fix the problem yourself. You're going to hire somebody else to do it for you. That's sad. That's a disgrace.
Thank you, Alex.
Our next few speakers are Brian Wellington, John Burt, and Stone DePrado. I don't see them in the meeting, so we'll move on to Dominic Racus.
Hello, Dominic, are you there?
I, yep, thank you for letting me speak. So, yeah, I guess I'm not involved in politics at all and as a, I've only been in Malibu for a couple of years, but I wanted to speak on this issue, seven B, because I voted personally for Mikey Pearson, and I'm kind of embarrassed now of that fact because we have a lot of issues here in Malibu. And he wants to, you know, spend our dollars for something that's absolutely ridiculous. Why do we need someone else to come in, a third party to mediate you guys? You guys are all adults. You guys are all way older than me. I'm twenty-three years old. And, you know, by the time you get to your guys' age, you should be able to solve these kind of issues between yourselves. You should be, you guys should be able to talk to each other, you know, face to face, you know, or if you're too scared of COVID, just, you know, you can do the Zoom stuff, but it's absolutely ridiculous. You guys are talking about just spending taxpayer dollars. This shouldn't even be on the agenda, you know? It's absolutely ridiculous because how can you guys not talk to each other when you guys are all sitting here, you know? You guys are all sitting at your desks. There's real problems, you know, tons of homeless. I mean, you know, rent is super high. I've got four roommates. I'm still struggling. Why, why is the issue that you guys just can't get along? You can't just talk like regular people, you know? You guys are all calling each other racists. You guys are all white. Not a lot of women. It's pretty much just a bunch of white old guys, you know, in Malibu of all places. It shouldn't come to this. It's really something you guys need to just settle your differences and actually start a, I don't think so many of you would be angry at you guys if you would just start actually solving the problems that the people want you to fix in the first place. Because, you know, it's laughable. It's just a, it's a clown show over here. And because we're not short on real issues to work on. There's people like Steve Euring, who actually want to fix things. Bruce Stevel Silverstein, you're the, you're the rightful mayor, whatever, and we got Paul Grisanti. He only cares about himself. But yeah, basically, I know, just cut all the circus stuff out. Stop a, I don't know, stop all the BS. We don't need, we don't need a third party to come in so that you guys can all talk to each other like real people. Cut all that out. Instead of putting that on the agenda, put something real on there, like, you know, because there are actual problems. This isn't one. And, yeah, I'll concede the last fifteen seconds of my time. Thank you for letting me talk. Have a good one.
Thank you, Dominic.
And mayor, I don't see any of the speakers we missed earlier or any raised hands from the public, so that concludes public comment on this item.
Then I guess we get to go to the council. Who would like to start? I'll go first. I, I just want to take a moment to let Joe Drummond know that we have had Jewish mayors before, several of them. Some were very, very well-known, and claiming that there's never been one in Malibu is so easily disproven. I got to think you didn't even try to look. Steve, I see your hands up.
If you want to keep going, Paul.
I'm now, now I'm ready.
Huh? Excuse me?
Please, you have the floor.
Got it.
Got it. All right, uh, Mikey, I'm going to vote against this. And let me tell you why. One, the proposal in the staff report suggests we should have. The city manager and the staff involved in this process somehow. Uh, I'm not sure why you were doing that. I mean, they don't. I'm not aware that they're part of the problem or part of the concern. So sort of getting them involved, I just think it's, you know, if you're going to go that path. Uh, it's going to make things a lot more difficult to to accomplish. Facilitators. Facilitators are basically people, my experience, okay, and this right, wrong. People that come in and tell you how to do your job. That's what their job is. They sit down and say, you know, you're doing this, here's how you should be doing, here's how you should be doing it. And. I look at this and say, it's consistent with some of the comments we've heard. We should know how to do our job at this point in time. Uh, you know, we're all, like I said, we're all adults. We've been, you know, dealing with people all our lives. Uh, it doesn't seem to me that. Uh, we need to have somebody come in, or if we do need to have somebody come in. We ought to rethink what the heck we're doing up here in the city council because we're, you know, maybe we should. Rethink that whole process. I've not heard anybody explain to me why a. Retreat facilitator. And retreat. Will solve the the problem that we have. I don't know that it will. I I go back to the open economy that says, yeah, I've been in companies. Where things are going reasonably well and you have a retreat to sort of get everybody's spirit pumped up. And make people, you know, get to know each other a little bit better, but I've never been on a retreat where. They're trying to correct. Some some meaningful problems and we got some meaningful problems. I mean, if you go back over what's happened, there were some, there were some pretty nasty stuff that we went through. You know, back in our closed sessions, back in in, you know, right after Rita put a letter in. Three HR attorneys came in and said Bruce did not do anything illegal. And then three months later, we started an investigation to see if he ever did anything illegal. That's nasty. Uh, and we've had three times now where Bruce has had the opportunity to, you know, get the credit that's due him based upon. The votes and we've. Put that off, so that I don't know. If a retreat facilitator. Is the kind of person that's going to help us solve those things. You know, I'm not a psychiatrist or any of that kind of stuff, so I'm, this is, this is way outside of my. Comfort zone. But boy, you know, when I think about this stuff. I think more like therapist than I do. Retreat facilitator in terms of we're going to get some help. And the last three thing is. Where I'm going to vote against this. As it says in the staff report, we've got to do this in public. Alright, this is going to be a public show. Now I'll tell you what. If we're, if the council wants to to vote for a therapist. Who's going to come in and. Interview us all and then I'll. That that's Netflix goal, that's a Netflix goldmine. Alright, I mean, if we want to run that program, I won't be able to cover our budget for the next couple of years easily, alright, because that's, that show will, I, I'll pay to see that show. Alright, uh, I don't think we want to do that. I think we have put on enough. Three ring circus acts. For our residents this year. Uh, and we don't need anymore. And I think if we try and do this stuff in public. And we're just going to make ourselves look dumber than we already have. So my suggestion is, look, if you need some help. I think go out and get some help. Alright, I mean, but I don't think what we want to do, this is a group. And I think what we've really got to do is come back and just settle down and. Take, take a look at the things we have to get done and do them. And like I said. You know, when presented with that kind of stuff, we did it in our closed session that we had the other day. We were able to talk through things. We were able to come up with conclusions that made sense. And we've done that in other issues, so we can do that if we want to. And we just have to want to. So Paul, back to you.
Thank you, Steve. Mikey?
Well, sensing. I mean, if there's not buy-in, it's a total waste of time. You have to, there has to be buy-in, so if uh. We want to plot along like this, then I'll just withdraw the item and uh, we'll just go ahead and do it. See whether, let the chip fall where they may and hope the best. And everything you said was right, Steve, uh, you know, a little one-sided, but you didn't say anything that wasn't true. So uh, but yeah, if no one else sees the value in. Having a somebody of some sort, I don't know if the way it was written up here is the right way. Then I get it. That's not worth doing at all. Hundred percent agree. Those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Mikey. Bruce. And then Karen.
Well. I was going to respond to a number of the things that people said. And I had some prepared remarks, but if Mikey's withdrawing the proposal. I guess I don't need to restate them. Are are we done with this item?
I I Karen has taken her hand down if she doesn't want to speak or if she wants to. Remove the item and. We're done. If if as long as a member of the council wants to speak, I'm going to recognize him. But. Uh, if you're willing to with. Would you like to wait until Karen speaks?
Well, if the process says is that it's been withdrawn, then I think we're done. If we're not done, then I'll make my statements, but I. I would be better off if we just were finished like he suggested.
Members of the council, this was an item brought forward by uh, Councilmember Pearson. If he wants to withdraw it from consideration, he certainly entitled to do that. If the council wants to, uh, you know, I certainly wouldn't foreclose any council member the opportunity to speak on the item.
I see Karen's hand is down. And uh, so I guess that takes us to item seven C. So we're at seven C. At the. And do we have a a report?
Okay, this was my item. Uh, I was made aware by a source who has asked to remain anonymous. Of this plan that was voted on by the Board of Supervisors last summer. The first thing I did was notify the city interim city manager and then the Los Virginist Malibu. Council of Government. Executive Director. As it, uh, this Camp Kilpatrick is located in the unincorporated area of Malibu. Between uh, the city of Malibu and the city of Westlake Village. We did also uh, reach out to the Board of Supervisors uh, to um, a representative uh, at Supervisor Kewell's. Uh, office. And we were told that the city of Malibu was not specifically notified of this or nor were any of the COG cities. But that it had been on a publicly noticed. Uh, Board of Supervisors agenda and. That was seen to have been sufficient. So I will say. I absolutely acknowledge the uh, existence of Camp Kilpatrick. It's a. Uh, my understanding is a low security. Uh, sort of camp-like. Um, facility for juvenile offenders. It was not designed and it was not built to house. What are classified as the most serious offenders in the juvenile system. The hu- the highest and most serious level of crimes are what these particular individuals represent. Um, there's a letter from. Supervisor Kewell. Dated March tenth and I, I don't think we got it. Uh, soon enough to make it part of the record. Uh, if if it's appropriate, I am happy to read it. It's not too long. Uh, is that considered appropriate?
Karen, I I got a, I got a special email this evening just prior to the meeting with that letter from. Uh, Tess?
Yes.
Okay, so that.
Tess at Charnovsky.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, and I will note, I found it interesting that the city. Was not a recipient of that letter. Uh, but it was sent to us. By Terry Dipple, who's the Executive Director of the Los Virginist Malibu Council of Government. And that doesn't sit well with me either. Um, so uh. Interim City Attorney Cotty, uh, do you have any problem with me reading this letter into the record?
Do not.
It was received just. A few hours ago, just shortly before the meeting started. Uh, this is, I'll just show everybody. This is uh, on Board of Supervisors County of Los Angeles letterhead. Uh, from Supervisor Sheila Kewell of the Third District. It's dated March tenth, twenty twenty-two, but again, received by the city today. Excuse me, an open letter to the residents of Malibu and surrounding communities. Note, again, it was not sent to us until today, although it's dated four days ago. Next Tuesday, Supervisor Holly Mitchell and I will bring a motion to the board. That would direct the county to house justice-involved young people. Who have previously been under the care of the State's Division of Juvenile Justice at Campus Kilpatrick in Malibu. As well as as Camps Scott and Dorothy Kirby. I want to share the research and thinking behind this proposal to allay any community concerns about the county's plans. Jurisdictions around the country, including the state of California and the county of Los Angeles. Have been moving from a punitive to a restorative model for juvenile justice. As a result, result of overwhelming neuroscience research that revealed. That the adolescent brain is highly subject to reward and peer influence. And that the rate of development of the teen brain varies widely. Teenagers can often recognize risks, but incomplete brain development reduces their ability to control impulse behavior. The US Supreme Court has relied on this neuroscience to require that juvenile justice practices. Be redesigned in accordance with scientific knowledge. As jurisdictions have moved away from a quote, treat kids like adults, unquote. Model of juvenile justice, we have also learned that most youth, including youth with serious charges. Are healthier, less likely to have future contact with the juvenile justice system. And more likely to repair harm when the response to their behavior is restorative, not punitive. I have had the pleasure of meeting many LA County young people who have been convicted of serious charges. And have have received the support and services they needed and have become leaders in their communities. I hope that in future meetings, you will have the opportunity to meet some of them. Campus Kilpatrick is the county's newest juvenile facility. And its design and programs have been informed by scientific research and national best practices. It is a locked facility where young people live in a therapeutic home-like setting. And are provided with individualized, trauma-informed plans to help them heal. Build skills and transition to responsible and constructive lives. Campus Kilpatrick has always included some young people charged with serious offenses. And our committed probation staff and community-based providers have done a wonderful job supporting them. We anticipate that the number of young people added to the current Kilpatrick population will be gradual. Starting with a handful and never exceeding more than a few dozen. The Board is asking communities throughout the county to support these young people. In addition to Campus Kilpatrick, other young people will be housed at Camp Scott in Santa Clarita. And Dorothy Kirby Center in Commerce. The the safety of the staff and young people at Campus Kilpatrick, as well as surrounding communities. Is a very high priority. We are currently working with architects to oversee needed. Renovations. And that work will include a determination regarding whether additional security is needed. In addition, we are working with teams of mental health professionals, educators, community-based service providers. And others to infuse Campus Kilpatrick with the programming and supports. That will keep the young people engaged in intensive rehabilitative services. Thirty years ago, there was a popular but but mistake mistaken notion. Um, this is unsubstantiated by science, that young people who break the law. Especially those who commit serious offenses should be treated like adults with little or no hope for rehabilitation. We now know better and know that we see better outcomes for our children and our communities. We, when we address young people's needs and support their transition into responsible adulthood. Sincerely, Sheila Kewell, Supervisor, Third District. I don't disagree with anything. That the supervisor's letter says. What I do. Have a strong disagreement with is placing the most serious offenders. Which typically means the most violent offenders in a facility that was neither designed nor built for them. At this letter, in this letter. I will say again what it says. We are currently working with architects to oversee needed renovations. That and that work will include a determination regarding whether additional security is needed. This facility was not designed nor built for this type of offender. And I find it very telling that the first proposal by the county, if you look at the report, you will see, and the report's. Pretty lengthy and I do want to credit. Interim City Manager Steve McClary for putting this together very quickly because it was on short notice and that's why it was an uh, amended agenda item. This proposal was made for Santa Clarita. And the community found out about it and there was a huge push against it. The Malibu community and none of the COG. Cities. Were notified. And I don't think that was an accident or an oversight. So I'm against this, not because I'm against juvenile rehabilitation. Not against it whatsoever. In fact, I studied it in college. What we have is a facility that does not work for this type of offender. And I don't think. I don't think anybody in the area wants to see the staff members put at risk. The residents of the facility themselves put at risk, nor the community. So my motion is uh, what it says here, to send a letter to the Board of Supervisors in opposition to this plan. I will also note. Even later notice, I received. Trying to remember this yesterday or today. Um, Supervisor Catherine Barker. Has a competing motion now that will be introduced at tomorrow morning's Board of Supervisors meeting. Her proposal. Is to use the Barry J Nidorf. Facility as the permanent facility rather than Camp Kilpatrick. I don't know what the Board of Supervisors will do with these two competing motions. But my recommendation is that the council send a letter opposing Camp Kilpatrick for this purpose. Um, we can talk about it more. There's a lot of information again in this packet. And I don't know if anybody else has any questions or statements about it.
I believe we're supposed to take public comment at this point and then we get to bring it back to the council. Is there anyone who has signed up to speak? Kelsey?
Yes, you have seven speakers for this item. The first you are Bill Sampson, followed by Alex Stein and John Burt. We'll hear from Bill Sampson first.
Hey, Bill, are you available?
Uh, yes, I am. Uh, I'm going to guess I'm the only person on this call that is um. Been in all three of the Malibu probation camps. That's David Gonzalez, which is now Fire Department. Uh, Camp Miller, which was torn down in Camp Kilpatrick. One of them, it may have been Gonzalez. Uh, I couldn't get in at first and it took a call to the Supervisor's office to get me and the other lawyer in my group. In there, um, it's my position that the statutes run on everything I did, but. I I don't know what they were doing, but I started a writing contest for these young men. I've been inside all of these places. I was in Kilpatrick uh, after they rebuilt it. I don't know what the level of damage was in the fire because you can't get in there. Um, I've worked with a probation officer who's a. Um, Malibu resident who. Uh, helps facilitate this writing contest. I will tell you that the stories from the kids who are. Not necessarily got nearly as bad actors as what they're proposing to put in there. They are heartbreaking. These kids come to the plate, council and two, Nolan Nolan Ryan at age thirty-six is on the mound. With a hangover and a bad mood and his fastball's at one oh one and he's throwing at their heads. That's all they've experienced. And then they tell you about their kids in their essays. Uh, it is dramatic. Uh, we try to get, we give them some awards, you know, for. For having the courage to write because when they go back home. Their gangs, the people in the neighborhoods, they know what they did. But the kids Kil Kilpatrick, when they rebuilt it, was built as a rehabilitative facility. It's, I've had a tour of it. This was before the fire, of course, but I can't imagine rebuilding it substantially different. Now, we can't get in with, you know, the pandemic and everything. But it's, as Karen suggested, it is a pretty low-security place. Years ago, I picked up some kids who were, because I walk up Bush Drive all the time. If you go up, you can walk there from the end of Bush Drive, by the way. It's not that, yeah, six miles. But I picked up some kids to give them a ride and then they needed a ride to the bus. I didn't realize where they were from. And I says, "Where you guys from?" And there was a moment of tension. That's a bad thing to ask in gangland. None of them knew where the other ones were from and I got them to the bus stop and it occurred to me later I just helped them escape. But back then you could walk out. The people they're talking about putting in there need to be separated from society and the facility up there when I saw it was not capable of excluding them from society. I hope our right, I pray our writing contest gets one of them to change their lives. We have no way of tracking them. You can't. It's private. I could talk about this a long time. I'm real proud of that writing contest, the group I belong to. Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm done.
Thank you, Bill.
Our next speaker is Alex Stein, followed by John Burt and Stone DePrado.
Thank you. Thank you so much for speaking on this item. I appreciate this, the opportunity. And you know, it's kind of funny, Karen, that you don't want these juveniles there because you guys are talking about how much you guys love talent shows. You love judging talent shows. You guys are spending all your free time at talent shows. Just think about all the high-risk kids that could go, "You're an artist yourself." Maybe you could actually help some of these kids, maybe teach them how to do some art. But instead you're going to sit on your throne, you're going to act like Marie Antoinette, let them eat cake, or let them go to LA County. But we've got to really look at the district attorney. There was a twenty-three-year-old grad student who was stabbed to death by a guy that had seventeen prior convictions that happened in Los Angeles. So I understand why you're afraid, but you need to look at the system. You need to look at the district attorney. It's not the jails that's the problem. It's the system of letting people out when they have serious crimes. So you're sitting there, you're afraid of some sixteen and seventeen-year-olds. Yeah, but what you really need to focus on is the actual murders, that the people that are actually doing felony convictions that are getting out. Because what happens is, is when you go to jail, you can sign the same form for a public defender. You can sign and say, "I'm indigent. I don't have any money," and they'll let you out of jail on an ROR bond, release on own recognizance. It's hard to say, excuse me, but that's what it is. So the system is screwed up. Now you sitting there saying, "Oh, in my Malibu, I can't have any of these kids here. I want to be so dangerous." I would like you to pull up any stats where anybody has ever escaped from any of these juvenile centers and actually done something. I haven't heard any about that. What you're doing is you're just gaslighting us and saying, "Oh, this is a potential thing. You should live in fear." No, I get it. I don't want a bunch of criminals in a nice city in Malibu. I don't, I don't, I don't want that either. But at the same time, you do have to show some sort of deference to these people because where are they going to go? In your city, Camp Kilpatrick, is a place that, you know, we can house these kids. Now, what should we do? We should make Camp Kilpatrick more fortified. That's what you do. But see, instead, you sitting in your high horse as an artist, as a wealthy woman, you could never imagine living in a city where there's kids that commit crime. But sadly, that's a reality we live in because we have a system where district attorneys will not punish people for their crimes. So it's a loosey-goosey system, but the idea that you're going to control the jail, you're going to control which criminals you get to have in Camp Kilpatrick just shows the type of entitlement that you have, Karen. And I get it. I would, I would live in fear too because you've got Los Angeles County is one of the worst counties when it comes to crime. I mean, that's really what you need to be afraid of, is those people migrating there. I wouldn't worry too much about the children. But at the same time, at the same time, Karen, you know that this is an issue that is really not going to affect you that much. I mean, it's really, truly not. So at the end of the day, what are we going to do? Are we going to say, "No kids allowed here? They can't come to our jail. Our jail's too nice. This is Malibu, California. You're not allowed in my jail." I get it, Karen. But what it does, it just shows your character. It shows that you don't have an empathy for these kids. A lot of these kids come from broken homes, parents that are drug addicts. They didn't ever have a chance at life. And now what you're going to say, you're going to poo-poo on them and say, "Oh, you can't come to my city. My jail's too good for you." But see, the thing is, you don't have any ability to show compassion. What we need is, we need compassionate leaders that are thinking of fixing this system, not fixing the jail, not fixing the other private prisons that we put people in. You need to actually fix the district attorney. You need to go to the people that are being charged with these crimes and the people that are actually following through at the district attorney's office and stop letting criminals out willy-nilly. That is the bigger issue with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And Mayor, we had several more speakers who I'm not able to find here. They were John Burt, Stone DePrado, Dominic Rockus, Don Juan, and Colby Jack. But we do have a raised hand from Jay Knight, so we'll hear from them next.
Mr. Knight, are you available?
Yes, I just want to say that the, as a fellow puppeteer here in the community, I'm very impressed with this Alex Stein guy because, you know, I'm aware that he is a man who also does a puppet show. In fact, from what I understand, his puppet show is the most diverse puppet show the west of the Mississippi. So anyhow, and as we all know, diversity is one of our biggest strengths here in America. So on to this Kilpatrick situation. Now, I've always been a fan of guys like Kwame getting criminal justice institutions named after them. You know, but I think the councilwoman may be going off onto a little bit of a NIMBY tangent here. You know, if we're going to be progressives, we can't just pick and choose what we're going to do with, with these kids here. We have to have restorative justice, no matter what. You know, it's all about restoration. When I had my car stolen and joyriding some time ago, I didn't have the juvenile offender who took my car prosecuted like that. Instead, I had him come over to my house and I showed him some karate moves. I had him, you know, doing work on my car, repairing things. I had him working on the engine of my car. I did, I had him do a tremendous amount of work and I taught him a lesson that he'll never forget. Anyhow, I hope that we do see more restorative justice here in the community and I give back the rest of my time to the meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Knight.
And Mayor, we do have one more speaker. We have Derek here in the meeting to speak.
Derek, are you available?
Hey, there we are. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
All right, I've been watching this and you know, I'm just sort of spinning my head here. I'm not trying to spin my head, but my head is just spinning because there was more chatter and more fighting than anything else and more backbiting and saying, "They're wrong, I'm right." And of course, as I understand it, your jobs are to actually wade through that stuff just like you're swimming through alligators and get to the other side, which, by the way, is a solution.
Do you have a comment about Camp Kirkpatrick item?
I'm getting to that, sir. And so, so the, the power one, that concerns me, number one, you know, Bill to go up from six hundred to a thousand. And what concerns me more, Mr. Alex Stein commented on it, was Karen. Karen, if you, if you watch her, just watch her on the screen. If she doesn't like what somebody's saying, she drinks her coffee, she takes her glasses off. She looks over like she's typing an email to somebody. She just pretty much tunes them out because she doesn't want to hear anybody that doesn't agree with her. And that's a shame. That's a real shame. Because then when she runs, "Oh yes, I'm for everybody. We need to come together on all these issues and we need to work together to come up with solutions for the schools."
I'm going to ask you to focus your remarks on the agenda item, please.
I've heard several people make comments about various members, so why can't I?
The agenda item is Camp Kirkpatrick.
Yes, sir, but many people have commented on your guys' handling of the issues. That just happens to be one of them. And you're failing because you're not, you don't really care if somebody comes along and says something you don't like. Because you, as Mr. Stein said, it's all about your great big egos. And I know you don't want to hear from me anymore, so before you push the magic plunger button, AKA the flush, I will go ahead and go. And thank you very much. Have yourself a good night.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Derek.
And I don't see any of the speakers we missed earlier in this item, so that concludes public comment. And Mayor, I just wanted to let the council know, John Cotty did lose power, so we don't have him on camera anymore, but we do have him calling into the meeting.
Okay. Bruce, I see your hand is raised.
Yeah, I'll go first on this. I've written down a lot of, some various rambling comments. So I'll try to get through these in some semblance of order. First of all, a number of speakers have said, have thanked us for giving them the opportunity. You know, that's your legal right. So, I mean, it's nice courtesy if you'd say that, but people should understand, you've got a legal right to speak. And we appreciate everything you have to say. This is kind of, this is a difficult situation. This, this, this item is difficult because I always say I want to be responsive and responsible to our residents. And it's my guess that our residents wouldn't favor this proposal. Not the proposal to send a letter, the proposal that, that we're talking about, the substantive act of opening the camp to to a higher degree of, of dangerous, people have been arrested. But I actually don't have a clue what our residents want because this item came up on fast notice and haven't had a chance to speak to very many people about it. For all I know, they're not opposed to it, although I suspect they are. But you know, this is, we don't have, we don't have a copy of the letter that we're being asked to send. So this is kind of a half-baked request and, and that's not unusual. We get these from time to time from certain council members. You know, and by contrast, and I'm not making this about me, but by contrast, you know, Steve and I a year ago submitted two fully baked proposals the day we handed them in. They were, we drafted a statute and we prepared a whole bunch of policies. And council wouldn't even give it the time of day to talk about them. But there was something concrete there to talk about. Here we're being asked to approve something that we don't even know what it is, a letter. Letter can do, can say anything. So I'm going to take a stab at what I think we ought to be saying. I, I heard for the first time that there's this alternative which we, which probably we would agree is better, a better alternative for us because it's not here. That's a real issue, right? Here versus somewhere else. And somebody just said NIMBY. It is NIMBY. That's okay. People are entitled to be NIMBY. So rather than send a letter that opposes this and explains all the reasons we dislike it, maybe we should craft a letter, if we're going to do it, that explains why the other proposal is superior. That requires, of course, understanding what the other proposal is and being able to get into those details. But maybe we ought to be thinking about penning a letter that says, "We understand you've got two things before you. We think the other ones are superior for all these following reasons. And by the way, having it here, and I'm not sure I heard it mentioned, maybe it was, the thing I think most concerned about is fire danger. Not, not somebody escaping this facility and coming here and causing a problem, but fire danger. Because I believe some of these arrestees or convicted criminals are probably arsonists as well. But you know, it's very strange that Karen is the champion of this when Karen and Mikey are also the champion of leave our homeless alone and let's get them a place to live in Malibu. When the homeless are going around Los Angeles stabbing people, robbing people, accosting them in all kinds of ways, and you know, they actually represent a real and present danger sitting in our city right now that we're not doing a lot about to, to deal with. But here we've got a situation where there's going to be some juvenile offenders six, seven miles up the road in, in the hills. Now, equally close, maybe closer to Agoura Hills, Westlake Village, Seminole Springs, Lake Sherwood, which is a very high-end community. What are they saying? What are they doing? Are we joining them in this dissent? Or are we doing this on our own and making ourselves stick out like a sore thumb? And again, we talked about NIMBY and I said, "I, I don't mind being NIMBY." But when you present yourself politically to the Board of Supervisors, you need to have more substantive reasons than not in our backyard. It's in a lot of other people's backyard too. Where are their voices? Karen, you're on the COG. Where, where's the COG? Why don't you have them doing this rather than us doing this? That way it's the voice of a much larger section of the community.
Would you like the answer?
When I'm done speaking, true. Which I'm actually just about done. I, 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 sorry, I was laughing before. Somebody, it's Colby Jack. That was pretty funny. But again, I, I, I think this is a well-intentioned idea. It's, it's, it's not the kind of thing that we ought to have before us in general because it hasn't really been developed. It's just a thought. We shouldn't be voting on thoughts. We should be voting on fully baked things that people have taken their time and worked to create. And nobody's done that. Instead, somebody's just had a knee-jerk reaction. This is a problem. I want to get it on the agenda and talk about it. There's a huge agenda of things other people have written and memos, but where's the letter? I mean, I don't like approving a concept. I like approving what we're going to say. And I don't know what we're supposed to say. It's like I said, if, if we're going to get there, I would support a letter that, that's, that supports the alternative proposal. Oh, and also perhaps talks about process, talks about why, that we did not get notice until it was too late for us to make a considered judgment and that we would like an opportunity to make a considered judgment, to speak to our constituents, to vet this among ourselves in an educated, informed way and then make a decision as to what we offer to the county to do. Rather than, "We just got this. We're in hurry-up mode and let's just put together a plan." So I, I, those are my comments. And Karen, if you want to explain why the COG's not
Karen, would you like to respond?
Sure. The COG meets once a month and we meet tomorrow morning. Coincidentally, at the same time as the Board of Supervisors. So, yeah, there was no opportunity for the COG to deal with this sooner. Like I said, I found out about this a week ago Thursday, so I guess that's ten days ago. When you say we don't have a copy of the letter, are you talking about the, the letter that I am proposing that we send? Right. Well, I thought procedurally it made sense for our council to discuss this item before a letter was drafted. Okay. And the other thing is the process. I have the exact same question. It does make me curious why Santa Clarita, and you can read about it if you just Google it. There was a huge community outcry against this in Santa Clarita. Malibu was not given the opportunity. None of the COG cities were. And again, this is not restorative justice versus punitive. It's about a facility that was never designed or built for this type of offender. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I, I have done a little bit of investigation and the, the offenders that they're talking about here are not people who have had a little bump in the road along the way. These are violent criminals who have killed people and other things of similar import. The other thing that you need to know, the people who are talking about, "Well, these are all just kids. How can they be?" Our, our youth authority goes up to twenty-five years old. So they have two groups and they're talking about having two groups up there which are going to have to be kept separate from each other because there's a younger group and the older group. And the average age of these individuals is going to be nineteen and a half years. So that's, that's not, you know, impressionable teenagers at this point, I don't think. But that is something that I think is serious and it's, it certainly was worth my while to, to read the agenda report that we got for this. It was late because we found out about it late. So I'm not in favor, and I think that you and Steve in the past have said our, our main job in Malibu is protecting public safety. And I, I don't think that there's any way for people who want to protect public safety to approve putting people in a camp that we haven't seen the design of that was formerly so porous that Bill Sampson could give some kids a ride home from the trail to the bus who had walked out of there. So I'm not, I'm, I'm very interested to hear how our, our duty to protect the public safety in Malibu has suddenly changed. And Bruce, I see your hand.
Yeah, so you know, like, we, we've had multiple times we've been asked to send letters and the letter's been provided fully baked as an attachment to the agenda. And then we comment on whether we approve that letter or don't approve that letter. In fact, I don't even remember a time when we just approved a concept. But you know, hey, I can write a letter overnight if it's important to me. I could write a letter in a couple of hours if it's important to me. I do it all the time for a living. So it's nonsense that I learned about this a couple of days ago, but So it's nonsense that I learned about this a couple of days ago, but I, and it's so important. I need to bring it before the city for debate and discussion, but I can't write a letter that even fleshes out the concept. As far as public safety, we're not going to secure the safety of Malibu, one iota by hurriedly rushing off an ill conceived letter to the board of supervisors. Um, especially if we're just Malibu shouting alone into the, into the void and don't have the support of the other communities in the area. Because then we are going to be just looked at as NIMBY. Because we don't have the support of the cog and you know, they can have special meetings. We have special meetings all the time where an emergency comes up and we're asked to convene. Uh, I don't know if a request was made to convene the cog. Um, I don't know if anything was sent in to propose a letter that they send. But again, you know, we're not going to accomplish anything as Malibu with a last minute. I'm going to say a half assed letter that just says, here's all the reasons we don't want this. And, and a lot of what's been discussed tonight has been our views of restorative justice, what works, what doesn't work? How are they going to house the people properly in terms of two different age groups? That's not for us. For us is just, is, is this something that makes sense this close to Malibu? And Calabas and Agoura Hills and Westlake and Thousand Oaks and various communities in the unincorporated area. And we should all collectively be speaking with that voice because if only one or two of us in isolation speaks with that voice, that voice is not viewed with any sincerity, with any sincerity. So I, I think this should have been put together better. Um, it should have been thought through more and, but we are where we are. And like I said, I would, I would support, in fact, I'll make a motion then that, that somebody craft a letter that complaint, that, that notes the procedural defect of the little time that we've had to make a considered decision and consult with our constituents, as well as the other communities in the area have had, not had that either. The fact that the cog hasn't had a chance to review this when it's smack dab in the cog. And then say, but in any event, we know there's this other alternative. And we don't need to even make a decision as to whether we oppose or support this proposal in our neighborhood. Because if it's voted to do it in the other place, it really, the, the other issues are really irrelevant. But I would not start explaining all the problems with it until we actually understand the problems. And that's my motion, which is actually is more baked than the proposal in the agenda.
Thank you for drafting the letter for us, Bruce. Which I think I, John, did you get that? Mr. Cotty?
So Mr. Mayor, I know we've been having some technical issues with Mr. Cotty and he's been, uh, he's been bouncing back and forth uh, in between the meeting here. So it, it looks like we have lost him for the moment.
We do have.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm here and I did hear the motion, Mayor Grisanti. So, and I, Mr. The council member Silverstein, Silverstone wants to draft it, um, what if?
I think he just dictated it.
No, it was, that was, that was very rough, but I'm, I'm not volunteering to draft it. I actually have a lot of things that are on my plate right now, but it should have come to us drafted.
I think staff will put together a letter consistent with the mayor put in Silverstein's motion.
Okay.
All right. I have a comment also about the involvement of the cog. Again, the cog meeting is tomorrow morning. I've spent a lot of time on the phone with both Steve McClary and Terry Dipple, the executive director of the cog, since I found out about this. Terry sent me an email oh, in the last hour or two before this meeting that he plans to speak tomorrow morning at the board of supervisors meeting. Uh, I don't know exactly how the cog will vote on this. I don't, I don't know what the motion will be. Uh, but the request is the same, that the cog send a letter in opposition to a facility that is not equipped for this level of offender. And again, uh, I received Supervisor Bargher's letter with an alternate proposal. It's dated the 10th. I received it yesterday.
Thank you, Karen. Uh, Bruce, your hand is raised?
Yeah, um, I believe we have the right to ask questions of the public who have spoken if we, if we desire, and I actually,
We do.
I very much respect Bill Sampson's views, especially on this subject after hearing him eloquently speak about it earlier. So I, he has his hand up. I wonder what he has to volunteer to contribute further beyond what he said already.
Mr. Sampson?
Uh, thank you for the kind words, Bruce, and I may have misled the council and if I did, I apologize. The young man about whom I spoke, this was 10 or 15 years ago. Back when there, I believe they were from Camp Miller when the two camps were there. Camp Miller had lower level guys who in many instances were kind of pre gang bangers. Uh, Kilpatrick had a higher level of offender than nothing like what we're talking about now. They didn't have the, well, they didn't have the kids who'd been caught for armed robberies and what have you, but just to understand just, I, I, I picked up some kids who probably had done some joy writing, but it was, it was 10 or 15 years ago. The Optimist Club used to go up and play softball with the kids. There was a movie made about these kids from Miller uh, that went around and played local high schools. The people they're talking about putting in Kilpatrick are not going to go play football with local high schools. The kids who were in Camp Miller, it was okay. I, I think they call themselves the Camp Miller Mustangs. I've taken enough of your time, but I, I did not get any people recently. It was years ago. Thank you. That's it.
Hey, hey, Bill, I don't want to put you on the spot, but um, since you are knowledgeable about the subject, I wonder if we could impose upon you to work with our staff to help draft the letter. You are, you're also very skilled at writing.
Well, again, thank you for the kind words. I, I, I would be pleased to do so. I mean, it, it's become very near and dear to my heart, as you might imagine. Um, the genesis was Steve Lopez, of all people, who lambasts Malibu all the time. And I, I wanted him to be a judge for this thing to show him, I think we're not all a bunch of elitist pigs trying to kick people off our beaches. Um, I've had noted people be judges, Chris Erskine and uh, Eric Sonheimer uh, and a couple of other people. Uh, Steve's never done it. Um, I communicated with him, but I, I'd be honored to at least try to work with, I don't know, with John, Trevor, I don't know who, somebody.
But for respect of my motion, unless, unless, unless it's inappropriate legally, I'd like to amend the motion to suggest that, that somebody, that Steve, that Bill work with whoever's going to do it. You know, two eyes are better than one. Bill's a really good writer. Um, and it'll help expedite the process.
Uh, I'd like to hear from the city attorney about that.
Are you available, John?
I am. Mayor, members of the council, again, good evening. I'm happy to work with Mr. Sampson to craft a letter.
Uh, how quickly could something like that be accomplished, John?
I think we can put, put something together uh, from, for city staff tomorrow and city staff can, and share it with Mr. Sampson shortly thereafter.
Do you think there's any benefit to getting something done tonight so that we can have it at this, at the uh, board of supervisors meeting in the morning?
We can, we can certainly try. I'm, 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 I'm at a disadvantage because I've lost my power, but.
Yeah. Okay. I see Mikey's hand is raised. And I hadn't recognized you yet. Sorry.
Sorry. I know it's hard to see the yellow and white hand. Um, I just actually want to echo some of Bill's memories of the camps up there. And I don't know which camps it was, but uh, when my mom was still alive, I do remember we somehow helped out a couple of kids that ended up at Tranca's Market. Uh, that had been 20, 25 years ago, at least, maybe more. And they were not, they're not the offenders we're talking about now. Um, just listening to everybody in, input here, it seems to me that with this meeting tomorrow and with competing bills or bills, whatever, with completing, competing um, things brought forward by the supervisors and our cog meeting tomorrow. It's, it seems like it's too late for us to write a letter now and we might as well wait and see what the results are here because this is not going to be constructed instantly. And I, it seems like we have very little time to have the impact we need to have. Um, I, I agree to hear this so late is, I remember we heard this a long time ago, then it went away. And now it came back with no notice. That seems like a, a big miss on the supervisor's part. And I get if it's on their agenda, maybe we should know, but that's, that's a, that's a tough one sometimes. But it would seem at this very late hour that it'd be great to see where the cog's at. It'd be great to see what happens at that meeting tomorrow. And then, you know, have the ability to craft something that kind of encompasses where the reality is at that point. Um, that, that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Uh, Steve Euring?
Uh, yeah, I, I tend to agree with Mikey. I mean, I, I don't know enough. In the meeting tomorrow, what is the result of the meeting tomorrow going to be? I mean, they're going, they're going to finalize, I don't, right, I don't know either. And, and I think, you know, going off half cocked isn't necessarily the, the right thing to do. Uh, and I, you know, maybe tomorrow, if Terry Dipple is going to go to the supervisors meeting, he makes the case that says, you know, nobody in the cog was informed about this plan, right? Or, or the, the alternative plan. And to, just to make sure that we've got some time, once they vote on whatever hell they're going to vote on tomorrow, uh, that we do have a chance to respond because I, I tend to agree with, I think it was Bruce or whatever, you know, a, a, a letter or a communication that comes from the cog along with its, all the, the sister cities, I think will have a much bigger impact on the supervisors in a separate letter from just Malibu. I'd also like to see something from the sheriff. I mean, what the hell's the sheriff think about this idea? Uh, and, and you know, we need some time to let him figure out what's going on and give a communication. So I, 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 I'm on Mikey's side, this sort of says, look, let's not try and throw something out. It's going to be half baked. Let's find out what's going on. Let's make sure we understand what the process is going to be. And then try and craft a response that not only comes from us, but from the other cities in the cog. So we're going to get the biggest bang for our buck. I said, Paul.
Do you see any value in uh, a, a letter uh, supporting the competing motion?
I don't know what it is. You know, we, I just, I, I know.
That forwarded to the council?
Excuse me?
I, I thought I forwarded everything to Kelsey on this item. I've been getting stuff as late as an hour before the meeting.
Yeah, I didn't see anything on a separate, and she may have sent an email, but I didn't, I haven't looked at it. So I'm, look.
Bruce?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm persuaded by what Mikey and Steve are saying. I'm going to withdraw the motion. I think that it would have been great if we had something fully baked to be able to present. I mean, you know, at this point, we're not going to get anything meaningful prepared to be submitted before the vote. So there's no point in submitting something inadequate before the vote. Nothing's going to happen overnight, even if they vote unanimously to do this, it's not happening this week or next week. So let's wait and see what happens. Maybe they won't even make a decision tomorrow. If they make a decision, the decision could be to do the alternative, in which case we won't have had to say anything. If they vote to do something that is problematic for us, we can register an objection after the fact, which isn't quite as good as having registered an objection in advance. But we are where we are. So I'm going to withdraw the motion. I think the right thing to do right now is to sit and pay attention to what they do tomorrow and then revisit the question of what, if anything, we want to say. And if we come back to say something, I think we, it ought to come back with, this is what we proposed to say, so we can tweak it rather than just have a concept.
And Karen, if you get to talk to Terry, I mean, I think it's important that he emphasized the fact that we've had no advanced notice of this thing, right? I mean, every.
He's well aware of that.
That's cool. He's got, that's the case he's got to make tomorrow morning.
Okay, but I think maybe you guys are missing what was in the uh, agenda report. This motion was passed unanimously to put these offenders at Camp Kilpatrick on September 15th, 2021. It's in the packet.
Okay.
This vote already took place. Supervisor Barker is trying to go in after the fact with a competing motion or, or, or a new motion. So I do move that we authorize the mayor to send a letter to the LA County Board of Supervisors in opposition to its plan to relocate secure track juvenile offenders to Camp Kilpatrick. That's my motion.
I'll second that motion. Uh, Mikey, your hand is still raised?
I'm just trying to absorb a little bit more of this. Sorry. I didn't mean to have my hand up. I apologize.
Okay.
I, I was going to say that I really appreciate um, Karen bringing this to our attention because it's just kind of shocking. I feel like there's just, it's right outside our border. I mean, this is.
Did you freeze? What's happening?
No. I think uh, I think we have a motion in a second and we might as well call the roll. Are you available, Kelsey?
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
I, I need, can I hear the motion, please?
The motion is the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor to send a letter to the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors in opposition to its uh, to its plan to relocate secure track juvenile offenders, youth found to have committed serious offenses at, to Camp Kilpatrick.
The, the thing I, I would make, I'm sorry, I just, I tried to be more complete here, but the thing that would be awkward is be to send that if somehow Catherine Barker's motion goes through. Um, can we add to it if that mark, motion goes through that we don't, that this letter, are we trying to get it there before the meeting tomorrow?
Yes.
How's that going to be possible?
I don't know how that's going to happen.
I don't know how that's possible.
The board of supervisors meeting again is simultaneous with the cog meeting and Terry Dipple is going to try to zoom into both.
I'm concerned, I'm concerned, but I, I feel like it's almost like they did this timing on purpose.
Shocking, isn't it? Like writing an open letter to Malibu and not sending them a copy.
Yeah, I don't know why we would send this letter to come after without knowing what happened tomorrow. That's the problem that, that catches me off guard. And I don't know how long it'll take to get the letter, at least 24 hours, I would imagine, or 48 hours or something like that.
But is there any timeframe of when they anticipate this Camp Kilpatrick will be ready to, to house these people? Is there a timeline on that?
That's a good question. I don't have anything uh, in writing, but the source who made me aware of this whole thing 10 days ago said that it was a matter of weeks or months.
Really? Geez.
Because it was approved last September unanimously.
Uh, I would honestly rather come back quickly, a closed session after we hear what happens tomorrow if we need to. Because I think it's really important, but I think it's important we know what happens. And we're not going to be able to impact that at this point.
Yeah, can't meet in closed session about a letter we want to write.
Well, that's true. Um, well, sorry. Well said. Um, that we meet, I don't know how quickly, but it feels like we're just lacking a little bit of information here that's kind of important. As far as I can tell. I mean, it's important.
Karen, you said there was another city where they tried to do this in the city. There was an uprising. Where is that?
Santa Clarita.
And with the date, were they able to stop it?
Yes. That's why an alternative location was sought. Guess what that is?
Ah, so, okay. So they, they were planning to put it up there because the people screamed, they figured they're going to bring it back down here. So we got to get the cog to scream. I mean, that's.
The cog meets tomorrow morning at 8:30.
Oh, we, we're, we're in the middle of a roll call. We have two votes to do this. Um, I'm, uh, since Mikey's having difficulty deciding how to vote, I'm going to, I'm going to vote no. Why don't we find out how Steve is and then Mikey can.
I, I.
Could I start that roll call vote over for you?
Please.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
I want to send a letter. I'm just not sure of the timing. I'm really stuck on the timing. I mean.
Mine's just the same, Mikey. Then, then, then it'll be a tie and it'll be a no.
Yeah, I, I don't feel like I know enough here and I, but I am concerned. So I feel like whatever we do tonight isn't going to be our last bite at the apple on this anyhow, since they're meeting tomorrow morning. I feel like whatever we do tonight isn't going to be our last bite at the apple on this anyhow, since they're meeting tomorrow morning. So I'm going to abstain.
Councilmember Euring?
Uh, no. I, I just don't think we've got enough information to write during a meaningful letter.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yeah, I think we should vote because we're, that's what we're paid to do, make the big decisions. I'm voting no.
Motion fails.
Okay.
I select, nice election plug there, Bruce. You have abstained multiple times over multiple meetings, so um.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Shot across the bowels.
Motion to adjourn in.
In honor of Paul.
Don't worry, the Malibu Times will give you a nice soundbite anyhow. It's going to be awesome.
Motion to adjourn in memory of Johnny Fane.
Second.
Second.
Motion in the second to adjourn. Will you take the roll, please, Kelsey?
Councilmember Euring, I believe that was your motion?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries. You are adjourned.
All right. Adios, guys.
Thank you.